Regular meeting for Monday, September 21st at 6:01. Roll call please.
Director Byrne.
Present.
Director Riley.
Here.
Director Evans.
Present.
Director Hoffman.
Here.
Director Adams.
Here.
Director Potter.
Yeah.
Director Edwards.
Here. Thank you. Could we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, and the people.
Libertad y Justicia.
We can justice for all. Thank you. Any additions and corrections to the agenda?
There are none.
No. Okay, good. Now we'll have oral communication. Anyone wish to address the board on consent calendar, information item, closed session item, or matters not listed on their agenda may do so only during oral communication. Please limit your comments to three minutes. The public may comment on all other items at the time they are presented to the board. Oral communications are open.
You would like to present a comment, please use the raised hand icon or press star nine on your phone. Chair Edwards, I see no raised hands.
Thank you. Oral communications closed. The consent calendar. Any board members wish to pull anything from consent calendar?
Chair Edwards, this is Director Hoffman.
Go ahead, Director.
Four, seven.
Say again?
Four and item seven.
Four and item seven. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have a motion?
We'll have approval of the rest of the agenda.
Second.
Consent agenda.
Motion made by Vice Chair, seconded by Director Potter. Roll call vote please.
Director Riley.
Aye.
Director Evan.
Aye.
Director Hoffman.
Yes.
Director Adams. Director Byrne. Director Edwards.
Yes. Yeah, mute Mr. Laredo. He's moving around.
I get to vote?
Director Potter. Motion passes seven zero.
Motion passes seven zero. Thank you.
So Director Potter, Chair Edwards, just wanted to make sure we could hear your aye or nay.
Aye.
Okay. Director Hoffman, item number four.
I'm sorry, you were cutting out a bit, so I'm just...
Okay, item number four. What's your questions?
Yeah, I just pulled this because it seems to me that before you hire somebody, you have an adjustment to the organization chart and you do an evaluation of the workload for the existing staff, and I don't see that being done here. And I'm just concerned about adding $100,000 of long-term financial as well as purse debt to the district based on just a one-page summary. So I mean, this is not...
General Manager?
Yes, so the position was included in the org chart for approval last year. There are a number of positions that were approved that were left unfilled. The four-page document that's attached as Exhibit 4A is the job description, the essential functions. That's been through the HR people. This is in conjunction with the approved WEAR program that was part of the budget adoption. And the WEAR program is part of the RRMP, the Rescue and Rearing Management Plan. So I'm not sure what else would be looked for. This is pretty much how we've been doing most of the position authorizations in the last... I don't know, even before I got here. Suresh, I don't know, you're on. You've worked with HR on this, and Thomas Christensen, you're available?
Yeah, you know, one way to think of this as well is that we've had Kevin Erkhart, the fisheries biologist, move on. And we've been really hit hard by a lot of his duties, especially with permit compliance and maintaining those permits and reporting requirements. We have this WEAR now that's going to be coming online, which is a totally new function that needs to be dealt with seven days a week. The plan is to have one permanent staff member, and then we're gonna need help on the weekend from someone who's like an intern to check it on the weekend. We're hoping to, and we've already been doing this, pushing some of Kevin Erkhart's duties onto the associate fisheries biologists. Corey Hamilton has been very helpful. It's been helping maintain the scientific collecting permits with their, which are multiple from federal agencies and state agencies. And we are also working closely with Cal AM on duties associated with giving guidance on how to release water from Los Padres Reservoir to help maintain the habitat downstream of Los Padres Dam. There's just a lot of work to be done, and we know that the proper maintenance and operation of a WEAR that is counting a federally threatened species is gonna take an additional person to help us with that.
And Dave, if I add on that, we did show this position on the preliminary organization chart, but once the position is approved, if it is approved tonight, that's when it will make it to the permanent org chart, and that org chart will be posted to our website.
Any other questions, Director Hoffman on that?
Yeah, this is not to add a position to the org chart. This is to hire somebody. So you're talking apples and oranges, as far as I can tell. Again, I don't see where the workload has been evaluated as relates to existing staff versus an additional person. And so the staff report seems to be deficient in detail about that. So I'm hesitant to, again, hire a long-term, full-time position at $100,000 a year based on what is presented and what has just been described. I just have real problems with it.
Director Byrne, I have a question for Dave.
Go ahead.
Isn't this essentially replacing Kevin's position from last year?
Well, kind of a combination. We've reallocated some of Kevin's work to Corey and Bev. Originally, to run the WEAR, we were gonna have a technician, but given our succession planning, we wanted to try to find a lesser experience but still highly qualified biologist so that we could begin to groom him or her for filling more of the role that Corey and Beverly have fulfilled through time, especially since with Kevin's departure, they picked up extra duties as well.
Okay. Any other questions on this item? Let's take it to the public. Any questions from the public on this item, item four?
Chair. Yes, I see a raised hand. Michael Bear, please present your comment.
Hi, everybody. You know, I logged on five minutes before the meeting began and was frantically looking for the raised hand icon, which is a tiny little icon, and did not show up till 30 seconds after you closed for an agenda's comment. So I would narrow it to one minute if you, you know, if you would get, afford me the opportunity. There's nothing controversial about it, and if I can't do it, then I understand, you know, if there's some legal reason I can't do it, I can't do it. But it's a friendly comment, and I missed by 30 seconds. I literally missed by 30 seconds. I don't know if Arlene could see me trying to raise my hand 30 seconds after Chair Edwards closed the public comment.
Okay, let me take it to General Counsel to make sure I'm within the law. You know, Mr. Laredo, can we let this gentleman come in for...
That's what's...
Zoom related.
It's within the prerogative of the chair. You may do so if you wish.
Mr. Chair, could we close out the items that Gary has pulled from consent? Then I'd be happy to hear from my good friend, Michael.
All right. Thank you. That's a good idea.
Thank you, Mr. Potter. That's a great idea.
Okay, Michael, do you have anything on this item before we...
Yeah, I love, I love Dave's idea that grooming a young, qualified person who can grow into the job and help the company to do wildlife biology sounds like a really smart move, personnel move. That's my comment.
Okay.
I move to approve item four.
Second.
I have approval by Director Adams and a second by Director Potter. Roll call vote.
Director Byrne.
Yes.
Director Riley.
Yes.
Director Evans.
Aye.
Director Hoffman. Director Adams.
Aye.
Director Potter.
Aye.
Director Edwards.
Yes.
Motion passes six one.
Okay, before I reopen oral communications again for Mr. Bear, let's do number seven. Director Potter, I mean Director Hoffman, item number seven.
Thank you, Chair. On page 53 of the package, there's a line item for $100,000 check to University of California, Berkeley. Suresh was kind enough to send a copy of the invoice as well as the, I hesitate to use the word agreement because it's just a letter that Mr. Stolt put together, but the invoice was basically a blank piece of paper. So I guess my question is, what did the ratepayers and the taxpayers of the district get for the $100,000? Because based on what was provided on the invoice, I have no clue.
General Manager, can we answer that?
Well, yeah, it's in the record from the various committee meetings that have heard it, but it's planning money for the removal of the Ford in Finch Creek that approaches the Hastings Reserve property. The construction funding is primarily coming from the State Coastal Conservancy, and the UC Regents match is purely a waiver of its administrative carrying costs and the provision of administrative services.
Okay.
Didn't the letter previous to that invoice spell out what the conditions were?
Yeah, yes.
I thought the letter asked for an invoice, and that's what we got.
Any other board questions?
Yeah, this is Director Hoffman. In Mr. Stolt's letter dated May 1, 2020, it states that the district's funding procedures are as follows. Strictly prohibits the use of grant funds for administration overhead or other indirect costs, requires an annual report one year after the date of the award letter, a full accounting of the district's grant reimbursed expenditures, requires copies of reports, journals, dissertations, once these documents are completed. And I don't see how a blank piece of paper satisfies the requirement. And I would bring in, I would ask, so Laredo, if this document dated May 1, 2020 constitutes a contract, what obligation since it's not signed by the Regents, what obligation do the Regents have to comply with any aspect of what's in this letter?
If I may respond through the chair?
Well, go ahead, Mr. Laredo.
I have not taken any time to investigate this. This is the first time a question has come across my desk with respect to this matter, so I'm not able to provide a type of response to this.
Mr. Chair, if I might, is this a matter that's time-sensitive? This is Director Potter.
Go ahead, Director.
My question, my question is, is this an item that's time-sensitive?
General Manager?
This is an item that's already happened. It's just a listing in the treasures report.
Exactly my point. Thank you.
Okay. Chair Edwards, this is Director Evans, if I might. Go ahead, Director Evans.
Considering that this, this is an ongoing task for the UC Regents and their group to design the Ford removal and all of that other stuff, I can't, and I do recall that there was some urgency on getting it so that they could meet a matching grant, that I think that we give them the benefit of the doubt and get, get the annual report by next May and any other documentation that we requested in the letter. And then if that is not provided by next May, then I think it's the time to approach them and ask. But in the meanwhile, they have just gotten underway with a design that we are partially funding, and so I think that we deserve to give them a little bit of time to do some actual work with the money that we have sent in. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Evans. Any other board members?
Yes, this is Director Hoffman.
Go ahead.
Again, we have a blank piece of paper, and we paid $100,000 for a blank piece of paper. And so my question was, and it hasn't been answered yet, what have the ratepayers and the property owners got for their $100,000? There's nothing but a blank piece of paper.
Where they came in and presented exactly what this project was and exactly why they needed the funding. So I don't know, I saw it in committee, perhaps you saw it in committee. I also saw it in front of the full board, and it came to us multiple times. So I think that we all had the opportunity to see their presentation and understand the scope of this project and ask the questions. I haven't seen this blank piece of paper that you referenced. I'm pretty sure there are some words on it, but I understand your concern, and I think that we will find out exactly what the ratepayers will get for their $100,000 as soon as that $100,000 is spent on items.
Well, that's the thing, Director, is that we already paid the money, and we have nothing to show for it. So that's the issue.
The letter that stipulates what can and can't be done with that money.
Okay, okay, okay. General Manager, can you get us a status report?
Absolutely.
Say again?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Move approval of item number seven.
All right, let's do it right. Let me take it out to the public. Anyone in the public got any comments on this, Arlene? Find out. Give them two minutes.
Michael Bear, did you want to comment on this item?
No, I'm just standing by for another thing.
Thank you, Mr. Bear. I just wanted to double check. I see no other raised hands.
Okay.
Second motion.
We had a motion made by Director Evans and seconded by Director Potter. So we have roll call vote.
Director Byrne.
Who did you say that motion was made by?
I think that's incorrect.
I believe the motion was made by Director Potter and seconded by Director Adams.
Correct.
Okay, we'll go ahead.
Director Byrne.
Yes.
Director Hoffman.
No.
Director Evans. Director Riley. Director Potter.
Aye.
Director Adams.
Aye.
Director Edwards.
Aye.
Motion passes six one.
Motion passes six one. All right. Thank you. Okay, before we get into General Manager Report, we're gonna reopen oral communication for Mr. Bear. Arlene, please open up all communication.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes, we can.
Great. Well, first I want to say, you know, one of the reasons I'm here is I really love those directors' reports with water supply and stuff, and it's been a little while. So I'm looking forward to seeing how the water supply is going on the peninsula. And I think you guys are all aware, switching to my comment, that I have moved to Santa Clara County in May of 2019 to help my parents. And Santa Clara County has a very interesting program, which I'd like to talk about, and I think it would be excellent for the Water Management District to begin to, to begin to take, you know, take an interest, start to develop. And I understand you have a tremendous amount of stuff on your plate, and the bandwidth may not be there for immediate action, but let me put this idea forward. And what they do, it's a water conservation effort using gray water from washing machines to, for irrigation, and particularly fruit trees in Santa Clara County. And I don't have all the information. There's a, the county has hired a woman, a company run by a woman who will go to, you know, and they, and they broadcasted, this is Santa Clara Valley Water District I'm talking about. And you can go say, yeah, I'd like to learn how to turn my washing machine into gray water for my fruit trees. I mean, that's specifically fruit trees. I think you could use it for any kind of, you know, gray water irrigation. And, you know, there's funding, there's a program there. They give free advice. It may give you some kind of stipend back, a rebate program for buying some of the equipment, you know, some help and paying for the infrastructure. You know, just imagine, just imagine that there was a program where washwater was, you know, a gray water system, and you guys were, you know, making it happen all over the, all over your district. So that's my comment, and I can, I have Dave's email, so I can do the research and get him a contact person to pursue that. Thank you for your time.
Well, thank you. Oral communications are now closed. All right, General Manager Report.
Yes, and I'd like to invite Michael to move back to Monterey County and take advantage of our Laundry the Landscape Program that we already run through our Water Demand Division. And we do sponsored seminars and classes on doing the Laundry the Landscape Program. So it already exists. But thank you, Michael, for bringing it to everyone's attention. Okay, so with the compliance report, this first report, I just want to go through a few things quickly. We're 11 months into the water year, so the next report will be for the full water year. And the lower right-hand corner of this chart, the 659, that's a positive, which means we are outperforming the target or the budget for the year. And with one month to go, we look really good at meeting the budget with no violations of river pumping or the adjudication. Next slide. Want to just highlight here, excuse me, that the table 13 right number hasn't changed. It's 218 for the, for the year, but San City D-Sell does look like it will close on or about 200 or 195 acre feet. So we've seen a very inconsistent but a number of very productive months out of San City D-Sell, which is a positive. Next slide. This is an 11-month proxy for customer service. This is production for delivery to the customers. We're now 26 acre feet below last year at this time. Remember, we did start off the year in excess of last year at this time, probably due to the low rainfall in November and the early months, the effect of that really high heat weekend that we just had, and Labor Day weekend will show up in the next month. So I don't know if we'll see a closing, or if we'll maintain that, but this will at least be another year in a row of relatively flat and reduced overall customer demand. Next slide. I don't even know why we talk about rainfall when we get to the August-September timeframe. There's been nothing to report. But the next slide, it is a little interesting that we've exceeded the long-term averages. So the red bar is the average, and the blue bar is the actual in unimpaired flow. And I think the best way to point a finger at that was the high exceedance of average or long-term average in April. So we're still seeing a little bit of impact from the late rains on stream flow. I can tell you that our fisheries people have pretty much ended their rescues for the season unless there's a special call. We've rescued just under 13,000 fish, steelhead rather, 8,500 on the main stem and 4,400 on the tributaries. Give or take some change. So that concludes the compliance report with some relatively good news. For Agenda Item 11, I've got a single slide that I want to talk about, especially in the aftermath of the guest opinion that was published on Sunday in the Herald. As you may all know, and Arlene, I don't know if you can find that slide, there it is. As you may all know, on Wednesday of last week, California American Water pulled its application for an appeal of their coastal development permit for the D-Sell plant, and has a stated intention of coming back in several months with a revision to the plan. The guest opinion raised the rationing word and how tight supplies are, and I won't disagree that they are very tight, but the data is something I just wanted to share with you and the public, and with one precaution, you know, water accounting is different than physical ability to move water around in a system. So I just want to focus on the numbers, and then we'll talk about some of the caveats. So what you see here is, you know, average pumping in the river for the last four or three years, no, five years, I guess, has been about 6,300, just over 6,300 acre feet. And that's just looking at the water right that was subject to the cease and desist order. Accounting for water use off the river in the CDO compliance is a little bit different. How Malpasso gets counted, how... How Malpasso gets counted, how ASR diversions get counted and so forth. But the actual water right, the goal is to get the basic water right down to 3,376 acre feet. So if that is all the company pumped and if they met their seaside basin limitation of 1,474 acre feet and if we could reliably count on 1,300 acre feet from the aqua storage and recovery program. Now, the four-year average for ASR is 1,282 acre feet of injection. So that's pretty darn close to 1,300. Of course, the long-term goal is to run ASR much more like a reservoir behind a dam. And you build up your supply so that in drier years, you've got more access to banked water. San City D cell has often been just denoted as 94 acre feet because when that project was put into place, that was the set aside or the give back to California American to offset San City's portion of unlawful diversions from the river. But San City D cell, as I just mentioned in the last charts, it looks like it will come in at about 180 acre feet this year. And it's long-term, when I say long-term, it's three-year track record, which included some challenging years, is right about 180, you know, 165. And then finally, Pure Water Monterey, and it says 3,500 acre feet. We all know we've got a supply constraint on the injection wells. We're going to cover part of that in Action Item Number 17 this evening. But with the remediations that are expected with the addition of two new deep wells, we see no problem in meeting 3,500 acre feet in the next full fiscal year. Keep in mind, we're in a partial year now where that 3,500 would have been about 28. And I think we're on track probably to meet about 23. But in the next full year, we certainly expect to do the faceplate value of 3,500 acre feet. So if based on those numbers, you look at the total available supply, 9,744, and compare that to the average customer demand on a water basis, we're actually 81 acre feet away. And I just told you that we know that San City D cell more than covers that in the last three years. The Table 13 water right, I showed you on the previous chart, was 218 for the current year. It's been about 313 on average. And they're what we call carryover credits in the seaside basin, which are additional supplies. So every year in the last three to four years, there have been these additional increments that add up to hundreds of acre feet of kind of spot available water. So you add that to the fact that we're starting the water year October 1st with just under 1,200 acre feet in storage. And we actually have the supplies it takes to spend the time to think intelligently about what the water supply solution should be. It doesn't mean we've got all the time in the world, but effectively we're off the Carmel River and new supply is being planned for future needs for jobs and residential growth and housing and in lieu recharge for the seaside groundwater basin. But we're really there right now. Now, I mentioned a couple of caveats. And that's types of things where we came to the board a month ago with a parallel pipeline for aqua storage and recovery going to the north while extraction of groundwater in that same general vicinity going to the south. And that constraint can limit the full productivity of the ASR supply. Remember, we talked about shoulder months and the crossover months and so forth. There's a pump station in the current general rate case and the general rate case has been delayed. While the pump station would be really helpful in moving more water up the Carmel Valley. So there are some constraints that we're not, as, since we're not the operator of the plumbing, so to speak, that we're not fully. But it does in fact point to a less dire situation in terms of the water available to meet this waiting period of trying to resolve the full final water supply project as perhaps less likely to lead to rationing than was portrayed or less likely to create great hardship on our business community and the residents of the area while we try to sort things out. And that concludes item 11.
I have a question. When is the actual date of the next cutback that the 81 acre feet would fall into?
Right. So at the end of September, a milestone will be missed. How the state intends to act on that is somewhat up in the air. I have been in personal contact with State Water Board. Yeah, it's unclear how, you know, how the information, the violation or missed milestone will be communicated. So we'll just have to work that out, but it should be, you know, shortly after the beginning of the year. Water.
The 81 acre feet is the optimum supply?
Yeah, all of this is just kind of looking at averages.
By the end of this month, we could be more than that.
Well, this is based on five-year average of customer demand against what supplies we are supposed to have. And so ASR is a good example. If you can't get 1,300, then your need goes up. If you didn't have some of these other little spot supplies, so let's say it's not a normal year or a wet year, but a drier year and there's no Table 13 water rights that came in. So we've been relying, we've been relatively fortunate in the last three years that we have these other little pockets of water around. I'd like to tell you that they're going to be there every year, but I can't tell you that. But if they are, then we can muddle through for a year or two with the supplies that we have based on the legal authorization of withdrawals from the Carmel River.
But I guess my question is, at the end of this month is the next cutback? And we could be more than 21 acre, I mean, 81 acre feet in deficit?
Yeah, I suppose we could, you know, demand would have to go up to raise that number. Because what this shows us is ignore any of the cutbacks if we actually, if the company actually got to their legally available right. So skip the missed milestones and skip, skip everything, go straight to, only take 3,376, your legal right from the river.
Okay.
Yeah.
This is Director Hoffman, Dave. On that chart, it says 1,300 acre feet ASR. What was last year's production ASR?
917.
So instead of 81, it's now actually 481 approximately and not 81?
Yeah, if you want to just go on a current year basis. Again, the way ASR is supposed to work, any conjunctive use program is supposed to work is you build up the reserve. So that, you know, starting right now with 1,200 in reserve, the idea would be, hey, we've got 1,200 in reserve. So we can still get that 917 year, we actually had more than 1,200 in reserve at that point in time. That's, that's the way you're supposed to run an ASR program. So it's still very early, but you're right. If any of these come in lower than expected or you have no banked water, that's, that's where you become susceptible. So that's, that's inaccurate.
And so that being said, this, I'm sure that the Water Board has seen this. And it's my understanding that even based on this, you know, 481, 81, this is nothing near what would require the CDO to be lifted.
Right, my contention has always been that the language of the CDO is clear, but the intent of the CDO is clearer. And that's, it's not an instantaneous satisfaction. So this, this goes to, it speaks to not incurring penalties and not violating the CDO. But to lift the CDO, we need a permanent water supply.
Thank you.
Any other board questions?
I have a couple of questions, Chair.
Go ahead, Director Riley.
Dave, the, the effect of missing a milestone, and I'm going back to the Director Byrne's question. The effect of missing a milestone, is that, is that a fact that, that exists, you know, today? And then does this, does the State Water Board issue a new order? Or is there something automatic that's already in the existing order that, that changes any of the calculus? That just forces their calculation, you know, in a real-world action way as opposed to a theoretical way?
Yeah, yeah. So there's no rewriting of the document, it's, it's in there. An interesting fallout is the mathematics is tougher if you need more than 3,376 off the river. Because then you count the first 600 acre feet that goes into injection at ASR as a withdrawal from the river. You count any Malpasso water that's made available to the general Calum customers as just a general Calum withdrawal from the river. So, and this is where if you, if you still have the CDO in place, but you're meeting your legal limit, these are kind of two different scenarios. So what you see in front of you is if Calum could live within their 3,376, which seems to be indicated that if everything's just right in a year, that we've proven that they could, then the math is just really straightforward, just get to your, your legal limit. If we're still using CDO math because we need something else from the river, so more than 3,376, but something less than 1,000 or 2,000 acre feet taken off of the 8310, the current effective diversion limit, then the math gets messier. And we haven't had that kind of conversation yet. I've kind of pledged to Chris Cook to sit down with him and try to sort through the differences between the numbers and practical, you know, practical application. But the, but the answer is it's all within the document, it's all envisioned in the document. The actual pushing out a state notice that we've missed a milestone, we don't know yet how that's going to work. And, and they haven't thought through it yet.
And my follow-up question was, there was always a no-fault argument that could be made on around the milestones. Does that, does that argument have any traction?
Well, so any of the applicants of which we are one of that body could request that no-fault clause to be honored and the penalties to be waived or the milestone reduction to be waived. I don't anticipate that happening. And I won't say that I've been told it won't happen. But I think that the staff level expectation is it's unlikely to happen.
And then the parties that have access to that argument are who?
The applicants, so California American Water, the district, the now-defunct Mayor's Authority, City of Pacific Grove and the Pebble Beach Company. So, you know, obviously the, the significant players in the room are the company and the district.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Any other questions for GM? Okay, thank you. General Counsel Report.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, members of the public. The board did meet in closed session this afternoon at 4:30 PM. There was a single topic on the agenda. It was the performance evaluation for your General Manager. The board did meet and have a dialogue as to the draft evaluation. The board set a, continued this discussion to October 8th at 5:30 PM to expand that, to have an interactive dialogue with the General Manager on the topic of the performance evaluation. No other action was taken. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Rorado. Okay, report from, Director's report including AB 1234, reports on trips, conferences, attendance and meetings. Any directors?
Chair Edwards, if I may, I've just been, had communications with folks that have tried to call in and be recognized and they're been unable to do so. So I don't know what kind of technical difficulties that folks are having. But if we could resolve those, that would be helpful.
Okay, thank you. Arlene, could you check into that?
I do not have control over the callers. I see two persons calling in. And they need to press star nine on their phone. And that should signal that they have a comment. Or if they, yes, if they are viewing the presentation or the meeting on their computer, they would need to locate the raised hand icon.
Okay.
I try entering the meeting again if, if, but I do not have control over how people enter the meeting.
All right, thank you, Arlene. Any other directors have any comments on item 12? Okay, just a few comments from me. I want to thank the, the board for supporting the letter to the CPUC on the surcharges. I want to thank the General Manager and General Counsel. That was outstanding letter that passed by a 4 to 1 vote. So our letter meant something and I appreciate that. And next thing, I want to thank the General Manager for his work with the Coastal Commission on, on Calum project. He put a lot out there. I hope next month he can bring us his presentation. You've seen the last slide of it, I believe, next month. But I want to thank him and the district and the board for all they have done in these matters. I think we make, made a difference on them. So that concludes my report. Next item, yes?
Director Edwards, if these two callers are not able to press star nine on their phone, they could email me the items that they want to speak on. And I could make sure that we acknowledge them under those items.
Okay, could you put that email address out so they can get it publicly?
Yes, and I see two persons. And that is, or I can, I can just ask them right now. Let me unmute these two persons, all right? And they can tell me which items they want to speak under. Would that be fine?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Caller number, I see a caller, caller number two. What items do you want to address the board under?
I would like to provide public comment to the last discussion around water supply. And am I being heard, Arlene, please?
Yes, I can hear you, we can hear you.
Thank you, this is John Tilly. I sit on the Ordnance 152 Committee. And we all look to the Water District.
Excuse me, Mr. Tilly. Chair Edwards, do you want to take that comment now?
You're mute.
Go ahead, take the comment.
Please proceed.
Thank you very much, Arlene, and thank you all, Directors. In relation to the last discussion around water supply, it's difficult to listen to the Water District who is here to provide us with a sustainable source of water, not do so. The idea that we will have spot availability of water and to assume full production when it's never been proven and to just go down the edge of water rationing, water supply crisis and overreliance on the Carmel River is difficult to listen to. One comment was, I'd like to be able to tell you that we will be there every year. There's an overreliance on rainfall with all the plans are being put in place right now. There's an overreliance on getting the sea. There's an overreliance on getting the CDO to be bent, if not disregarded, due to the fact that we're not looking for, you know, just a more permanent supply. So I'd encourage you to do that. Um, we're not always going to have rainfall and and expectation and overreliance on production from unproven assets. And rainfall is just not a good way for this community to to build a sustainable water supply project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, check the other caller, please.
I see another caller. Did you, uh, could you tell me what items you will want to present, uh, comments under?
None.
Thank you very much for your response.
Okay, thank you, Arlene. Uh, anything else under director's report? We close that out? Okay, GM, let's get into, uh,
Yeah, so
Public hearings, how many people do we have out there in the public?
Well, first off, we have a presentation, uh, from Larry Hampson. I've got a couple of slides to to preface that and then we'll let Larry go. And then, and then I'll have an answer to your question on how many people we have for public hearings when we get to that.
All right, let's go with item thirteen, the presentation, Sleepy Hollow.
Yeah, so, um, and Arlene, did you and Larry work out the the file and everything's ready to go for him too?
Yes, he will, um, present the file.
Okay.
And, um, so
Yeah, I've got a couple of slides that I just want to show everyone first.
All right, I'll I'll open, um, number thirteen.
The intro, yeah.
Yes. Here we go.
So this is, this is how we spent our summer vacation. Uh, this is Thomas Christensen down at, uh, the Sleepy Hollow Steelhead Rearing Facility during the week of the the Carmel Fire. Um, you can see the facility, uh, in the background. And this basically became the, uh, northwest edge of the fire. Um, our fire, our our entry road, uh, is pretty much charred above, uh, well, the entry road became the front line. And, um, I don't know, Thomas, you've talked to these guys if you want to make any comments, but, um, go ahead to the next slide. You can see that they set up camp, they did, uh, to make sure the facility survived. They did pull fuel away from the the structures. Um, and one of the the key reasons they, uh, spent so much time down there is we have a generator that gave continuous, uh, electricity to pumps that pulled water from the river that could be accessed to their, uh, water tenders. And so there was something in it for them as well as something in it for us. And I think, uh, with that, I just wanted to to let people see that, um, there was a a cooperation and interaction. But there was never a a really, uh, huge sigh of relief. We we worried every day that it was going to go up in smoke, you know, a month after the three million dollar makeover that Larry's going to tell you about, uh, came back online. So, um, we're very fortunate and we very much appreciate the firefighters, uh, looking out for our facility. So with that, um, Arlene, I'd like you to turn it over to Larry.
All right. Larry, I'll just take me a moment.
Chair Edwards, while while Arlene's queuing that up, can I ask a question? I'll take that as a yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Dave, um, since they pulled water from the river, uh, with our I don't know what you want to say, our assistance, was there a way to track the quantity of water that was pulled for for them?
You know, I'll leave that to Larry to see if there's any metering that precedes the the valve that they might have accessed. Um, I do know that for the Dolan Fire, we coordinated with Cal Am to get, uh, the fire crews a hydrant meter so that they could fill water tenders. You may remember from the Sabroni's fires, they they've got semi-trailers with showers in them, with washing machines in them and so forth. To set up for the Dolan Fire, they wanted to pull that water up here. Um, and they will have, they should have pulled a hydrant meter for that. So that can be counted. Yeah, it's kind of a double-edged sword on the the river because, you know, we're rescuing those fish because of river conditions and, you know, exacerbating them. But I see Larry's ready to go, maybe he has an answer for you.
Yeah, so Arlene, I can
You can share your screen at this point, Larry.
Okay, so can you see a slideshow right now?
No, uh, no, if you're up at, at, did you go to, um,
Uh, hang on a second, no, I, all right, I have to, yeah, sure, all right.
There you go.
All right, so let's try this. Uh, so yes, in answer to the question, can we track how much water the firefighters used? We can infer approximately how they, how much they use. We have several meters on site, but it, the the hydrant they were using comes off of a line that also feeds other parts of the, uh, facility. But, um, we could, uh, do a, uh, a ballpark estimate of of about how much was used, um, by the firefighters, if if, uh, that's what the board would like to see. Okay, well, I thought, um, tonight, um, you know, we're coming on to thirty years now since this, uh, concept of um, a simulated natural channel was first developed, uh, between staff at, um, California Department of Fish and Game and MPWMD Fisheries Staff. And it, the board adopted the Water Allocation EIR, uh, and the Program to Mitigate for Water Extraction in nineteen ninety, and it did take several years for the concept to be, um, completed and the designs to be done and and permits to be, um, secured. Uh, but it was built in nineteen ninety-six and started operating, um, in nineteen ninety-six. Uh, between two thousand and two thousand eight, there were upgrades. We we found that there were, um, water quality issues, uh, arising from the water being released from, uh, San Clemente Reservoir. Uh, there were also issues about, uh, the water being warm and there were upgrades to filter and chill the water, um, between two thousand and two thousand eight. In two thousand and ten, um, it was clear that San Clemente Dam was either going to overtop with sand sediment, um, in the foreseeable future or be taken out, which would increase, um, silt and sand coming down to the facility and could interfere with the operations of the facility. And at the time, um, the consultant that the district hired estimated would take about one point four million dollars to retrofit to deal with these issues. In twenty-fourteen, NIF centered the, uh, uh, sort of the the question of how should, uh, the facility run? And they recommended a more robust facility that included recirculating portion of the water, what's called a recirculating aquaculture system, um, and relocating, uh, the intake and, um, upgrading most of the the equipment at the facility. In twenty fifteen, um, the board approved four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for an upgrade design and for securing permits to go to construction. Coastal Conservancy reimbursed that four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in expenses. And of course, this board knows that, um, two point two million dollars has been approved for facility con- facility construction, uh, with one point eight million, um, being reimbursed by the Coastal Conservancy. So this all started as a project to deal with an increased sediment load at the facility from, uh, the removal of San Clemente Dam. And this picture just shows you what the dam looked like, um, before it was taken down, when it was full of silt and sediment. And this is looking downstream at the the dam, at the upstream side of the the dam. And then, uh, picture below just shows before they finished the dam removal project, um, kind of the before and after of, uh, the dam removal. So the project requirements for this upgrade, um, were to, uh, divert flow in a protected part of the river rather than at the, uh, point that flow was being diverted where, um, flow was fast and across a riffle and shallow. Uh, there's a desire to pump capacity, um, and protect those river pumps and provide better access. The the old river pumps would get flooded at a relatively low flow and and there was no access to the old river. Um, there, the concern about San Clemente meant that, uh, we wanted to filter out uh, most of the fine material that would come down as a result of dam removal. And then, uh, recirculation was an important aspect of being able to deal with poor water qual- or in the case of a drought, um, low, uh, flows in the river. Um, by recirculating the flow, we we were less reliant on the water that's coming downstream. And we have not, up to this point, had, uh, remote access to the plant. In other words, the plant operates twenty-four hours a day, but people are on site only between five and eight hours a day. And so the rest of the time, there's no one there to, um, to monitor the the plant site or to change things. And so this upgrade, uh, allows that, uh, monitoring from, uh, remote, uh, places and also being able to, um, operate the facility to a certain extent remotely. And NIFs and CFW, uh, C- CDFW now, um, did request that the district be able to year-round in the case of a drought, uh, when fish wouldn't be released back to where they were taken out of the river. And, uh, one of the things that staff requested was to simplify the maintenance of equipment, um, make it really simple so that, um, it didn't require a a high level of, um, expertise to maintain equipment. So here you're looking and and so what I'll do is I'll just try to take you around the site. I wish the board members could visit the site. Um, there's been a lot of, uh, impressive work done onsite to upgrade the facility. And and these pictures will just give you a kind of a hint of what's done. Um, but this is the entrance to the facility, um, with a sign, uh, you know, giving some credit to the district and Cal Am and the Coastal Conservancy for this facility upgrade. So this is just a basic schematic of how the facility works. You can see the river, uh, in the upper right to upper left flows past the facility. Um, there's an, this is the old area of the old intake where water was taken from the river and pumped up to the headworks. This is the area of the headworks of the channel. And the water would flow downstream, still does, through the rearing channel. It's an eight-hundred-foot-long rearing channel, if you're wondering about scale. And then it's discharged to this deep pool, um, back to the river. So new design moved the intake downstream into the deep pool. The water's pumped up to a, or flows to a wet well under gravity where it's pumped. And it can either then go to the headworks as it did originally, or the water can be taken to the the building, the filtration area, and then pumped over to the headworks and flowed down, um, the rearing channel. And then the added feature here for circulation is that right before the discharge point, there's a diversion box that allows the operators to divert a portion of the flow from the discharge back to the filtration area and then pump it back up to the headworks. And so, for instance, uh, you could take fifty percent of the discharge flow, recirculate it, and that way you're reducing your need for Carmel River by a half for raw Carmel River water. So, uh, here you're looking at, um, the cone screen, the new cone screen intake that was placed in the deep pool, um, for, uh, providing the raw water to the the river. And I must tell you that, um, the district got a pretty good deal with the contractor that bid this project. I've seen some of the invoices and, for instance, this screen was fifty-two thousand five hundred dollars just for the screen. The bid price was fifty thousand. There's some other items where the bid price, um, underbid the actual price by like hundreds of thousands of dollars. Um, so I I think, you know, the contractor didn't complain, he just did his job. But I'm pretty sure they lost, uh, quite a bit of money on on this project. And, um, this intake screen has three brushes that that, uh, circulate uh, forward and backward to, uh, brush off sand and silt and organic debris. Uh, one of the previous problems, uh, or one of the problems with the previous intake was there was no, uh, mechanical brush. So, uh, staff had to brush material off and sometimes it would be, uh, piling up two, three times a day. And so these brushes can be set to whatever interval the operator wants. They can even be run continuously if, um, things really get crazy and there's a lot of debris flowing down, uh, the river. So out of that, uh, wet well, the water's pumped up to, or the water is, uh, gravity flows to this wet well where it's pumped up through the valve vault and the meter vault. And from there, it can either go into the sediment basin or it can go into this new building, fifteen-hundred-square-foot metal building that houses a lot of, uh, the equipment for filtration. So the wet well is designed, uh, for minimum amount of maintenance. The pumps that go here, um, they're pretty large pumps. Uh, there's two of these pumps that go into the wet well. And if they were both turned on to their maximum capacity, they would supply, uh, half of the daily demand of the Monterey Peninsula. And, uh, what they're, uh, designed for is you drop them in on these rails and they drop down about twenty-two feet, uh, where there's a a little cam lever that locks the pumps in. And if you want to ever pull the pumps, um, for maintenance, then you just pull the chain up and the pump goes free and you can use, uh, something like this or another type of a lift to, uh, pull the pump and and take it, uh, for maintenance. These pumps are about six hundred pounds each, so, um, it does take some, you know, pretty hefty equipment to pull these things. Um, this is the sediment basin for filtering out fine materials. So this this settles out the, like, silts and sands up to, uh, about two millimeters. Um, it'll hold fifteen thousand gallons. We didn't know exactly how to size this, but it's constructed such that if it fills with silt and sand, then, uh, there's a cover on it right now. But this cover can be, um, taken off and then, um, the material can be removed with a backhoe or or other piece of equipment and either placed on site or or hauled off, uh, site. So this is the outside of the metal building that houses a lot of the filtration equipment. And this is looking inside the building. The yellow arrows show you the flow. This is flow from the sediment basin going into a drum filter. This flow from the discharge of the rearing channel going into an identical drum filter. Um, one of the aspects of this project is there's, uh, redundancy built into everything. There's two drum filters, there's two wet well pumps, there are two pumps inside this building. Um, so there's lots of redundancies so that if one breaks down, it can be switched over remotely. Um, or it can be switched over, um, it manually on site. And, uh, these are all new, uh, motor control centers for the pumps and, um, the drum filter and, uh, the UV unit that's also inside this building. So this one's looking inside the big drum filter. Uh, water flows through the drum filter and goes out of these filters. These filters are forty microns. So for reference, uh, the average human hair is about fifty microns. So this will filter out, uh, down to some pretty, uh, fine, uh, material. And there's an automatic backwash on these. This, uh, bar here with the little blue items, uh, are actually jets that spray out at a couple hundred PSI and the drum turns. And so the the operator can set the the filter and the backwash cycle, uh, either manually or right now it's on float so that when the the filter gets plugged up, it automatically backwashes and starts filtering the water again. This is a picture of the tank in, uh, the building that's used as a buffer for, uh, changes in flow. These drum filters, when they cycle on and off, they they hold, uh, several hundred gallons. So this this tank can go up and down. Or when the operators change, um, some kind of, uh, operation, this this will buffer changes in, uh, demand, uh, from, uh, the the water going to the rearing channel and other parts of the facility. And it'll buffer any changes, uh, for instance, if the wet well's all of a sudden surges. And these two pumps here are what sends the water out of the building and over to the headworks. Again, you can see we've got the the redundancy dual motors here. And these motors are the same as the wet well motors. They can produce about, you know, up to half of the Monterey Peninsula daily supply. Here's, uh, one of the more unique features. This is what I call the district getting into the twenty-first century for operations. Um, this is called the human machine interface. So this is a script that shows you what's going on at the facility. There's graphs of the pumps. There's graphs of temperature dissolved oxygen. Um, you can select what flow you want, either from the wet well or from the building. Um, you can decide whether you want to turn the UV reactor on or off. Uh, you can run cooling tower. So there's lots of capability with this human machine interface. This is what staff can see over the web at their desk. So if they get a call from, uh, an alarm that sets off right here at this, this programmable logic controller, they can get on a website, they can diagnose the problem and then they can try to fix the problem remotely. Or in most cases, if you get an alarm in the middle of the night, you, you want to go out to the site and find out what's going on. But if there's something that's set off and, and you can fix it, you know, you can certainly not have to take a, a time out in the middle of the night, go to the facility. You can wait for the morning because you already know that you've, um, fixed the problem. And it also, uh, logs a lot of data. This logs data, I think it's every 15 seconds, um, on the plant and it logs, um, a number of different parameters, um, so that staff can go back. If there's a problem, they can look at the logs and diagnose, uh, what's happened. Um, or if they want to see what the long-term operations are and compare and see if there's something changing, um, they can also do that. So here are the tanks up near the headworks. So, uh, the cooling tower that was previously installed in 2000, I think it was, was raised, um, so that it need to have, uh, to have water repumped. There's a degas, uh, tower here that can be used. So if the water's being recirculated and the dissolved oxygen or carbon dioxide builds up, um, water can be sent through this degasser and it will strip out, for instance, carbon dioxide before it goes into this tank, which is a low head oxygen tank. This helps, uh, provide more oxygen and make sure that, that the, the fish aren't depleting the oxygen in the water, um, if we're doing a lot of recirculation. And also, uh, there's a number of control panels here. These control panels monitor what's going on at this part of the facility, including, um, the flow. Uh, you know, there's a question about what are the, um, did the firefighters use? Well, they, they got water from this pump that was sent over to the fire department connection, which is monitored, uh, by a mag meter that's connected to the machine interface in the building. And so we've got flow on this. We've got flow going to the rearing channel. We have flow coming to the degas tank and the cooling tower. So we can approximate how much flow if we want, um, that the firefighters use. And so speaking of that, um, here's, uh, you know, Dave's pictures are great. I was really shocked at this picture on the right showing flames above the access road to get you there. This area here had a slide last winter and Cal AM is now, um, putting a wire mesh. They're dropping wire mesh from the top of the slope down to the bottom of the slope. And it's going to go over to about this area here. But what I see is from the, from where the road just disappears all the way down and all the way up to Carmel River, the entire hillside from the river to the ridge is burnt. And, uh, we know that on burnt slopes, they can be subject to debris, uh, flows. So there could be a really, uh, significant challenge if there's heavy rains this coming winter and there's a lot of mud and silt that comes down into the river. Um, there could be significant challenges to running the Sleepy Hollow operation. It, it's designed to handle a certain amount of silts and sands, but it's not really designed to handle a huge debris flow, um, coming down off of the mountains after a fire. So we'll have to see how things go this winter. Um, I'm hoping that the road stays open. I'm hoping the work that Cal AM is doing right now will prevent, um, you know, debris slides that'll block the road, but we're certainly going to have to, uh, keep an eye out on this situation. So, uh, this is my final slide. And, uh, so we saw that the, the plant went through a crisis, a fire that PG&E cut the power off for days during. And, um, we didn't realize how critical it was going to be, uh, to have enough fuel to keep the generator going. And fortunately Thomas Christensen figured out how to get some fuel past the highway patrol, uh, and Cal Fire roadblocks, um, and, and maintain. He, he struck up a good relationship and so the district was able to refuel before the generator ran out. But it did show that maybe MPWMD should communicate on a regular basis before fire season with local and state firefighting organizations and just let them know, hey, we have a facility that can provide water and help fight fires, um, in this, you know, backwoods area. Uh, we have found just in the last month that the bacterial and algae growth has, it has become a significant problem. It's plugging areas up of the facility. Um, it's, it's the UV unit effectiveness to almost zero. We're still, um, trying to figure out exactly what it is and, and figure, and figure out how to deal with it. Because the facility's been working now for a couple of months, we're, we're finding some more leaks. We're going to try to address that. Uh, we're not sure if it's just maintenance or if it's something that's a warranty issue. Um, there is going to be a one-year warranty on everything once the facility is accepted by MPWMD. And I think, uh, we should clear all the paperwork and the final items on the punch list, I hope in the next month or so, and, and accept the facility which would begin the warranty period. And we have found that the cooling tower just doesn't work on really hot days. It, it can't cool the water down below, uh, what's coming out of the river, which the water coming out of the river can be over 70 degrees, which is in, at times it can be considered lethal to steelheads. So this is another issue that we've got to look at and, uh, figure out how to improve. So, um, I have several slides that I'm going to add to this presentation showing the actual construction. It was a, uh, it was quite a beating, um, for the contractor to get this project done. Um, the foreman said it was the most difficult project he had in 30 years, at least as far as getting in some of the pipelines. So I've posted those or I'm going to post those onto the end of this. Um, and if you're interested in seeing some more about the construction, you can download the presentation once it's put on the district's website, which, uh, might take a few days to, to get up on the website. So that's, that's my presentation for you and, um, I'd be happy if you have any questions to try to answer them.
Uh, board, do you have any, board members, do you have any questions?
Chair Edwards, I'd like to say something.
Go ahead there, Director Evans.
Thank you. Uh, Larry, thank you for a great presentation, really informative. And, um, but I just want to take this opportunity to thank all the staff that was involved in, um, in protecting this facility during, uh, the fire time. I think everybody went above and beyond. Um, and, uh, I'm really excited to hear that we have, you know, a good relationship now with Cal Fire and maybe mutually beneficial, beneficial in the future. But, um, you know, I'm one to run from a fire. I'm not one to run in. So I just want to thank everyone for keeping the mission, uh, foremost in front of mind and doing whatever they could to make that happen. Thanks.
Thank you, Director Evans. Any other directors?
I just want to compliment Larry on the great presentation. That was really good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other?
Yep, Supervisor Adams.
Go ahead there, Director Adams.
Thank you. Larry, thank you so much for that really informative and beautiful and understandable and comprehensive report. It was just really, really something. Having been out in that area during the fires, I, you know, you get a different perspective when you see what, what else was going on. But I did want to tell you, especially Dave, that you have until October 21st where you can file papers with FEMA and get reimbursed for the cost of the water, the cost of the fuel and a whole lot of other things that went, uh, into the, the work that you had to do, particularly around, uh, protection from fire or, uh, helping the guys who are firefighters as well. So just want to be sure that don't decide of that. Thanks.
Thank you, Director Adams. Any other directors? Well, this one, the chair right here, uh, you did a good job out there and I appreciate it. And I'd like for you to get those numbers on how much water was pulled out of, of the river so we can have it. We need to put that in, in, in a, another category. So at the end of the year, we know how much water we use and how much water they use for the wa, for the fire. I also would like for you all to, uh, make sure that we check what's wrong with that cooling tower. And I hope we do, Larry, I hope we don't have to pay any more money towards that facility. So could you tell me, do we have anything outstanding that needs to be done to the facility that you want to need some more money with?
Uh, we are looking into, um, what we can do to improve the, the facility's performance for the UV reactor and try to tackle the, uh, the bacterial growth issue. Uh, I'm also asking the consultant to look into, uh, what could we do for the, so the cooling tower works, but it doesn't work all the time. In the afternoons, the cooling tower, if it's left on, warms the water. So you just have to shut the cooling tower off for four, five or six hours. So I'm going to ask the consultant to come up with, well, what could we do to keep the water cool during that period in the afternoon, the hot afternoons, when the cooling tower is just not working? So we, we, we need to improve the performance of the facility somewhat if we want to achieve, uh, better temperatures at the facility. But I can't tell you, I can't give you any idea of what sort of costs we're looking at until we've got some potential solutions.
Okay, thank you. But like I said, let's get how much water was used and anything else that the facility need. I like what, uh, Director Adams said about going to FEMA and try to get us reimbursed on that issue. But I want to thank all the crew, especially the general manager, because he was calling the highway patrol. He was directing staff, you need to do this and you need to do that to get to that government facility. So, uh, I want to thank Dave again for all that work he did out on the phone to make sure we get out there. All right. Anything else? Next item. I think we are on public hearings.
We are on public hearings. There are only 17 members of the public. At least three of those are Cal AM to be ready to speak on this topic and, uh, two others are to speak on another topic on our behalf. So, um, I don't think there's going to be much public comment, but, um,
Well, we're going to give them three minutes.
Yeah.
All right.
And I'd like Stephanie Locke to introduce this item.
Okay, thank you. Um, Arlene, can you go ahead and start the PowerPoint, please?
Sure, Stephanie. Um, just a moment.
Thank you. So this evening, um, you're considering an approval of an application to amend Cal AM's system permits for the Ryan Ranch and Bishop Water Systems to change the source of supply from the Laguna Seca, uh, subarea to the coastal seaside subarea and native groundwater. The application before you is to connect the Ryan Ranch and Cal AM systems to the main Cal AM system. This will enable Cal AM to be able to supply native seaside groundwater, um, in place of the Laguna Seca groundwater. Environmental review for this project was completed in the amended Monterey Peninsula Water Supply Project EIR, and that was approved by the California Coastal Commission, or California Public Utilities Commission. Um, the interconnection, um, was approved in, uh, decision 1809017. And it was considered a secondary objective of the Monterey Peninsula Water Supply Project. Cal AM is considered a standard producer in the seaside groundwater basin. They have a recognized standard produ, production allocation. Um, the subunits in the Laguna Seca, Seca subarea had their production ramped down, uh, to zero in 2018. And since that time, Cal AM has pumped, continued to pump from the subarea to supply those, uh, units, but has replied or relied on replenishment assessments to comply with the adjudication decision. So Cal AM's operation of the interconnection would not conflict with the state water board order 20160016, which is the cease and desist order, provided that the water delivered through the interconnection is accounted for as native groundwater from the seaside coastal subarea. The adjudication decision expressly authorizes Cal AM to deliver or transfer native groundwater from the seaside coastal subarea for use in place of Laguna Seca subarea water. The CDO directs Cal AM to maximize groundwater use over Carmel River diversions in order to reduce diversions to authorized limits. And it prohibits Cal AM from increasing the river diversions to offset loss in production from the seaside basin. The 2016 CDO established the effective diversion limit, which is 8,310 acre feet annually, and Cal AM cannot exceed that limit as a result of either reduced groundwater availability in the seaside basin or increased groundwater demands in the seaside groundwater basin. So the delivery of native seaside coastal subarea groundwater will not change Cal AM's obligations under the CDO. The state water board orders address Cal AM's total rights to the CDO, to the seaside basin, but don't differentiate between coastal and Laguna Seca subarea allocations. So essentially that means that the orders don't impose any restrictions on Cal AM's ability to use seaside groundwater, um, as authorized under the seaside ground, uh, seaside adjudication decision. Benefits to having an interconnection to the main system include an improvement in system reliability, um, more uniform types of operations for Ryan Ranch and Bishop units. They're very different, um, systems at this time. Um, this would help their operation. Uh, would ensure adequate water supplies are available to meet the existing needs. Obviously in this time, um, fire protection and having reliability for that would be an important plus. Um, in addition, the, it would result in lower total dissolved solids for the Ryan Ranch and Bishop units and lower the salt concentrations in the Bishop wastewater system. And that wastewater system is, uh, the recycled water is used to irrigate the golf course at Pasadena. There are no other changes proposed to the two systems other than this just interconnection to the main system. So as far as SEQA, the, um, action that the board is focusing on this evening is just approving a connection, permanent connection from the Ryan Ranch and Bishop units to the main Cal AM system. Uh, this is a class one categorical exemption for an existing, for existing facilities for an investor-owned public utility. And the rationale for this is that there is no change in the system limits. So there's no change in the production limit or expansion capacity limit for either system, either the Ryan Ranch or the Bishop system. Um, currently there are emergency interconnections between all of the systems and so supplies do go back and forth, um, as needed. Recommendation, staff recognizes that, recommends that the board authorize the change in the source of supply for the Ryan Ranch and Bishop units from Laguna Seca subarea to native seaside coastal subarea groundwater to be delivered through a permanent main extension at the bottom of Ragsdale Drive. This evening, staff recommends the board takes the following actions. Adopt the findings of approval. Approve application 20200501CAW. Authorize the amendment of MPWMD permit M1503L3A for Cal AM's Ryan Ranch and Bishop units to connect to the main Cal AM system with amended conditions of approval for both of those two units and direct staff to file a notice of exemption with the county clerk. And that concludes my presentation. And that concludes my presentation.
Stephanie, I had to find the button. Uh, board questions?
Uh, Director Edwards, I have a couple of, that's okay?
Go ahead, Director Hoffman.
Yes, Stephanie, so as a result of this action. Will the, will CalAM be decommissioning or putting offline their arsenic removal plant? In Ryan Ranch and also the existing wells that existed in the Bishop system?
My understanding is that CalAM is planning to, uh, rely on the main system at this point, but, um, as was mentioned, we have Tim O'Halloran. Um, from CalAM who's available to answer these questions for you.
Any other questions?
Yep.
Board questions? Go ahead, Director Evans.
Thank you, um, so Stephanie, you said that, uh, so. Help me understand the impacts to the total water system. By doing this, because, uh, they've been pu- pumping out of the Laguna Seca sub area. Even though they're only, they're not supposed to be pumping anything from there. And so if they move that pumping over to the seaside groundwater basin, is that going to increase the? I see that as increasing the pumping out of the seaside groundwater basin and we're still capped off at, um, a legal limit to pump from there. So how, what are the impacts from that standpoint?
So I can start to answer your question and then I'll, I can turn it over to John Lear, but, um, my understanding is that the seaside groundwater basin includes both the coastal sub area and the Laguna Seca sub area. So what you're doing essentially is shifting the production from the Laguna Seca area into the coastal sub area. Um, and I don't believe that has an impact, um, as long as it is counted as native groundwater and it's, um. And like I said, John can probably answer it more scientifically than I can.
Okay, well, I don't necessarily need scientific, but just to understand, there's a total amount that we can take from seaside, whether it comes from. Seaside or a sub area or another sub area or something else, and so the total number is the same. But where we're pulling it from in the sub areas is a little different, is that?
Yes.
Accurate?
That's correct, and, and we also already count the demand, so. Um, for purposes of water supply planning and all of the discussions going on about sizing plants and facilities and so forth. We count the CalAM main system, the Ryan Ranch, the Bishop and the Hidden Hills, all four together for total consumption and production.
Okay, and so this one does not impact Hidden Hills, just the others?
Yeah, just the other two.
All right, thank you.
Another question?
Go ahead, Derek, Director Adams.
I think I just got the answer actually from what, uh, uh, general manager thought he said. But, um, will this have any permanent, uh, or potential, uh, any impact on potential development? In Ryan Ranch, like for additional facilities that Montage or Chomp may want to, uh, to do?
Actually, the Ryan Ranch system currently has a moratorium in place. And this will not change that. So, um, the projects that have been planned by Montage have already been permitted. Um, I am not aware of any other projects that are coming through at any point in the next couple of years. Thank you.
Any other question?
Good question, Chair.
Go ahead, Derek, Director Riley.
Um, I'm, I'm trying to review a little bit of history here and, and, and not to, uh. I think this action tonight cleans up a kind of squirrely relationship we've had. With those cross ties and shared, uh, supply, uh, pipelines and, um, uh, kind of, um, kind of a loose attitude about it. Am, am, am I right on this kind of fixes the, the problem so that it's more formal and official and that everybody recognizes it now?
Well, and the water supply committee, um, and I think you may have been on the committee at that time about a year ago. Uh, actually a little over a year ago, staff brought the use of the Bishop, uh, Ryan Ranch intertie. To the water supply committee, we had some discussions about it, it came back, uh, about five months later. And, um, CalAM proposed this, um, pipeline and connection, uh, to the main system at that time.
Okay, well, but by, my point is that this was a, uh, kind of problem area that was not, uh, highly, um, monitored, regulated or, or, or understood maybe, I don't know. Accepted maybe is the right question, anyway, this cleans that up, that's my point.
Yes.
That's a question, okay, thank you.
Yes, and, and you're right, there was, there was a history here. You know, long-term provision of service to Ryan Ranch from Bishop with no knowledge of the district and, uh. No examination of the implications on well levels in that area and other issues, so this, this was the proposed fix of a. Kind of bailing wired together, uh, solution.
So I have a question following up on Director Hoffman's question, I think. Is there anything in this permit that essentially decommissions the existing facilities?
Um, there is one condition in the Ryan Ranch system, um, which is that the wells will be either destroyed or turned to monitoring wells within one year of approval. Thank you.
Any other board questions?
Yes, this is Director Hoffman again, just to follow up, I didn't get a response, I guess Stephanie was going to refer to, uh, CalAM staff. Uh, I think she's attempted to answer the question about as related to the arsenic removal plant. In Hidden Hills, but as relates to the wells that exist in Bishop's system. Um, what will be the status of those and I acknowledge that several months ago. Um, it was acknowledged that CalAM was using the intertie, um, without notifying the district that it was for emergency use only. And that being a, um, permit violation that was never addressed.
You want to get some water?
Absolutely.
Yeah, Arlene, can you unmute Tim O'Halloran?
Thank you, that's why I bring him up.
Yeah, and I think just as an overview, um. Our, our current thinking is that they, and Tim can answer this, but they might want to keep the Bishop wells as backup. Um, so we did not require, uh, destroying those wells as a condition. But who knows if they really do want them as backup.
Yeah, thank you, Dave. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Um, good evening, board, um, yeah, to address the issues, we, we don't intend to use the wells either in Bishop or. Um, Ryan Ranch or the treatment facility, we intend to rely on the interconnect and the main system water from. Um, from, you know, the main system, so, um. Our plan is to decommission those wells and treatment plants and this kind of speaks to. The system reliability issue with, uh, you know, why, why we, um, developed this project to begin with. The project is nearly complete, um, we expect to, um, be able to provide a connection within about three weeks. And, you know, provide better water to both of those service areas. Thank you.
Uh, Director Edwards, you're muted, but I have one question for the CalAM staff. And, and, and so the, the CalAM, so with the decommissioning of the arsenic removal plant. Um, and consequently, the costs associated with that kind of treatment is very costly to operate. Um, is, what is the plan for CalAM to approach the CTOC about, um, the reduced operational costs as relates to, uh, rate payers?
Yes. Somebody, I'm trying to answer Director Hoffman's question?
I have unmuted Tim Halloran and Chris Cook.
This is, uh, this is Chris Cook, so, um, so yeah, I think that in terms of, uh, in terms of operations, we are. Looking at how to run our operations more efficiently, um, with the, uh, reduced time for those two plants. It's in terms of operational, uh, people, power, it's probably, you know, a couple hours a day that we spend at each plant. Uh, so in terms of that sense, it's not too much and we're hoping to do more proactive maintenance. With our production and treatment departments, so we're not as reactionary. Um, so, uh, and that we have additional DDW requirements of tank inspections and other items that we're hoping to fill in a little bit there. In terms of, uh, in terms of the general operations costs of the plants. That's something that we'd look at in terms of, um, in terms of actual use and compare it. Uh, with the system that we have right now, so we'd have to look at the, that data and, and get back to you on that, but. Obviously, if we're not producing it there, we're producing it from another location, so we'd have to look at comparative operations, uh, for those. Uh, for those two sites, so that's something we haven't done, but we certainly, um, will be looking at it as we look at it every year in terms of actuals versus plan. So good, good point.
Yeah, if I may, Director Edwards, Chris, um, would you acknowledge that reading a removal plant? Is significantly more costly than just pumping water out of a, uh, the seaside basin or, 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 or. Out of the ASR, and so there are significant differences, wouldn't you say?
Um, I would, I would say that, uh, I would say that for it. Are the arsenic removal is a, is a more costly one than just pumping out of groundwater and putting typhoon in if that's. You know, the case in, in a certain scenario, I think that the amount of, uh, pumping. It's not a very high volume of water compared with overall system, so, um, it's, it's not a huge O and M difference. I think a lot of it comes down to, uh, labor costs and we still have tanks and other systems associated, so I do. Agree with you that arsenic removal is, um, is one of the higher treatment ones, but in terms of quantifying it in terms of exact dollars, I, I'd have to look into it, so.
Thank you, that's all I had, Director Edwards.
Thank you, any other board members before I take it out to the public? No other board members? Uh, Arlene, please open up to public three minutes each.
All right, just a moment. The only raised hand I see is, uh, Tim O'Halloran and Tim, did you have another comment to make or? Had you completed your comments?
Yeah, that was from my previous comment, Arlene.
Great. All right, thank you, Tim. I see, uh, no other hands raised, Chair Edwards.
Thank you, Arlene, okay, uh, public, public comment is closed on that item, back to the board.
Chair Edwards, this is Director Evans, um, I do, I would like to request one change from staff. I did notice on page one sixteen in the packet on finding, on the evidence to finding number one. It lists this as being board item number twelve, it's actually board packet item number fourteen, so. Yeah, minor, but I want to make sure that that is amended in the record. Thank you.
Okay.
I move approval with the recommended findings.
And the change?
Second that.
And a second, vice chair made the motion, second by Director Evans, uh, roll call both please.
Director Potter?
Aye.
Director Adams?
Aye.
Director Hoffman?
Yes.
Director Riley?
Aye.
Director Evans?
Aye.
Director Byrne?
Yes.
Director Edwards?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. Next item, general manager.
Yes, this is the annual, uh, event, um, preparing for the new water year. Um, when we come to you quarterly with quarterly water budget adjustments, it all kind of started here with the annual. Um, I'll turn it over to John Lear. And John's ready to proceed.
Great, thanks, Dave, Chair Edwards, members of the board, good evening, um, this is public hearing item number fifteen. To consider adoption of resolution, uh, to modify the rule one sixty regulatory water production targets for the California American. Water systems, and so, uh, there are a few. Things that are going to change as we move through this, a little bit different this year than it has been in the past years. But to give you some history is that rule sixty, um, it specifies the regular regulatory production targets and it's, uh. It was genesis was the water conservation and rationing plan. Um, as Dave said, we compare the end of month values to production to these and it shows, uh, if we are moving on into, uh. A situation where we are overproducing the water that we have for the year, um, giving us early warning so that we can, uh, take rationing action and reduce the amount of water that we're. Producing, um, next slide, please. So we have the CDO, which, um, we've talked about tonight and the, um. Seaside Basin Adjudication, which we've also talked about tonight, uh, Pure Water Monterey, um, we will talk about tonight. But it is a new source of water in water year twenty twenty one and it has a regulatory mechanism. That all, as the water is injected into the ground and counted, it reduces the CDO effective diversion limit for one for one rate. Um, so next slide, please, Arlene. Um, when we look into the rates for twenty twenty one, the CDO, uh, now, um, has a. Limit of eight thousand three hundred and ten, but we touched a little bit earlier in the meeting on there could be possible reductions from missed milestones. Um, when the group, uh, met and talked about the rule one sixty, uh, at the quarterly water budget. Um, it was decided that because the quarterly water budget is on a three month, uh, moving window, um, that. The quarterly water budget did not want to look into the crystal ball and would wait and react and adjust if there were a. A one thousand acre foot reduction occurring. For twenty twenty one in the seaside basin, um, we go down our last ten percent, um, triannual reduction and we get down to the one thousand four hundred and seventy four for the coastal areas. And summing those both together, we get to nine thousand seven hundred and eighty four for all of the legal sources for water year twenty twenty one. Next slide, please, Arlene. As the protocol and the rules, we use a, um, moving average or an average of these water years, these water years represent. The, um, current tiered water rate structure and moving into that and, um, and they also represent some wet water years and some dry water years. So using these averages, not understanding, uh, what the climate we're going to experience in twenty twenty one. These monthly numbers become the percent, uh, of the, of the water that is historically consumed. Um, the percent is then multiplied by the total that we have and, uh, next slide, please, Arlene, we can see the. The regulatory targets by month using those percentages become on the left column, the monthly totals and on the right column, the cumulative running. Running total, which we use to compare, um, to, and say what, um, a state of rationing we're in, so, next slide, please, Arlene. Um, this, of course, is, uh, is still in the rule one sixty, it's one of the tables called out in the rule one sixty. Um, and this is a thing the board, a rule that the board can look at addressing and removing this table. Uh, for rule one sixty because it is in fact the, the, um, strange problem that Director Riley was referring to. And there is zero allocation of water, um, in the Laguna Seca area for CalAM, so that is what the, um. Previous item was, was addressing as well, and so a cleaning up of that once would be for having the board come in and look at this rule and clean this table out of this rule. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Looking at the Carmel River, there is an allocation from the river, but it, this is to be understood that normally it will not be produced at the rate that's shown in this. This table was put in at the request of the Sierra Club and it was amended into our rule. It, the, the production values off the river greatly depend on the operations of the Calam System and some of the other state border, state board orders that, that tell us how to build the quarterly water budget. So next slide, please. It is the recommendation of staff at this public hearing that the board adopts this resolution to modify the tables in Rule 160 and that directs staff to file a notice of exemption for sequel compliance for this action at Monterey County. So with that, I can give it back to you, Dave.
Okay, any questions? Any questions from the board? Just one for me, that 8610 chart that you showed, are we using all that water out of Carmel, out of the river? I like to see the actual numbers that we, we're using out of the river. You got a high number up there and we're not using that high number.
Yeah, so the 8310 is what's called the Effective Diversion Limit or EDL under the Extended Cease and Desist Order. So that's kind of a cap. As the year passes and as there's any expected action taken with respect to the missed milestones, that number can change kind of during the path, during the process. So if you miss and get 1,000 acre foot reduction, you'd be at 7310 and so forth. But the actual withdrawals from the river under that water right have been the five year average about 6314, I believe it is. So that's what we're really using. And that's why when I do my report on compliance, you've been seeing that we're below budget. It's because the budget starts with the limit, not the actual production. And, and there's other mathematics involved that I mentioned earlier about if you're doing this for CDO compliance and you also have to count ASR water up to 600 acre feet and some El Paso water that if it's being used for just general distribution. But, but they're, they're on it by introducing Pure Water Monterey for the first time. And I would suspect that when the dust settles on the missed milestone, that we'll see a revision to the 8310.
Okay, well, that's why I would like to see another column, what, what we're actually using. So when that hit come, we can see the difference. So that's some, and I also like to see us to make sure that we cleaned up, clean up that 160 that he said we probably don't need in there, that report or whatever. We need to clean that up and let's get that done. So that's all I have. Any other board questions? No other board questions? Open it up to the public, Arlene, please. Three minutes.
All right. If you'd like to comment, please press star nine on your phone or use the raised hand icon.
The first comment in my nine years on this topic, so.
Yeah, Mr. O'Halloran, did you want to comment or on this item? Okay, I see no comments, no raised hands.
Thank you. Public comment is closed on this item. Board, direction, please.
I move to adopt the resolution.
Move to adopt by Director Adams. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, it looked like it was tied in there. We give it to the vice chair.
Absolutely.
Okay, roll call both.
Director Potter.
Aye.
Director Riley.
Aye.
Director Hoffman.
Yes.
Director Evans.
Aye.
Director Adams.
Aye.
Director Byrne.
Yes.
And Director Edwards.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Seven zero, thank you. Item number 16, I believe.
And this will also be John Lear. This is the adoption of the first quarter water budget for the ensuing water year.
Thanks, Dave. Good evening again. This is public hearing, item number 16. It's the adoption of October to December for 2020, the first quarter of the water year 2021 budget. And this does have the assumptions going forward that we talked about for the Rule 160 that was just, just passed. So we have the Rule 160 targets as well as all of the state water resources control board orders that tell us how to use these permitted sources. During this quarterly water budget, we're still within the low flow group, which is shifting pumping away from the Upper Valley wells and watching the release schedule of the Los Padres reservoir in order to most benefit the river. So that's in the operational regime. And then as we said before, we have Pure Water Monterey coming on where we've now built up an operational reserve and has reached a point where Pure Water Monterey recovery is now scheduled for this quarter. It's actually scheduled, if you looked at the consent calendar, there was a note that we made a special meeting and as it became available in the September, some water that was scheduled to be ASR water recovered was then moved to be Pure Water Monterey water, which is consistent with what Dave was saying earlier in the meeting of now that Pure Water Monterey is here and is a year in, year out annual source that can be counted upon for an annual number, ASR will be moved, recovery of ASR will be moved down in priority to allow the ASR drought reserve to start building. So that's one of the changes in this year and this quarter. Next slide, please, Arlene. So we'll assume that we're producing native seaside water and Pure Water Monterey as production as long as the flow remains below 20 cubic feet per second at Don Juan Bridge. And this is what is referred to as a low flow period. It's established by State Board Order 2002, which says during your, when you're in the low flow regime, maximize as much as you can the production out of seaside basin and minimize as much as you can out of the, on the river basin. So the, this budget will reflect that. It will assume ASR injection and Table 13 diversions begin in September if we get precipitation and storms raise the flows and Carmel River is above threshold values. And it assumes that all Pure Water Monterey injected in water year 2021 will be recovered and ASR will be moved and used, utilized in a way to create a drought reserve. And this budget was developed on September 10th by the Quarterly Water Budget Group. So can we move to the next slide, please? We like to look forward at what we think would be the precipitation and kind of the heaviest precipitate months. And as you can see here right now, NOAA is saying it might be slightly less than average from anomalies that they're seeing. So we, in the Quarterly Water Budget Group, we just picked an average type rainfall year to put in some of the placeholder numbers moving into the rainy season. Next slide, please. So this is the Rule 160 and we are in October, November, December. And so by the end of this quarter, our regulatory limits will be 2,300 acre feet. Next slide, please. So this is the actual budget that was agreed upon where we see in the Carmel Valley Aquifer in October and November, we're pumping low numbers. And, and then in December, we have put a placeholder in. So if there's some diversions and some ASR injection, we're prepared to go out and have the facilities to be working. So we were prepared to start injecting. Just like last year, we started injecting on second day, we were allowed to be permitted. So we want to put these placeholder numbers in here and be ready. If not, and we don't get any rain, December would look a lot like October and November. So that's the caveat to look at. The rest of the water in October and November comes from the seaside basin and it is a blend of recovering the native seaside groundwater from the coastal areas and of Pure Water Monterey. If we were to move into injection, we would reduce recovery of Pure Water Monterey to be the water that's produced within the seaside basin and served to demand in the seaside basin while we're performing ASR diversions. And then as you can see down on the bottom, there is the uses of where these waters would go to October, November, all for customer use. And in December, some would go to water projects and different water rights. So next slide, please. So the recommendation would be to adopt the proposed water supply strategy and budget for Calam Main System for the fourth quarter, for the first quarter of water year 2021, the October to December 2020 period. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, John. Board questions? Any board questions?
I have a question, Chair.
Add that director out.
Going back to your chart about two slides ago or one slide ago, where you identify the source of the, that, that one. Where can I find the water that comes from Pure Water Monterey?
There will be, it says source and it says Carmel Valley Aquifer. It says seaside groundwater basin and it's the last line item in that section.
Well, I'm trying to understand the volume that comes from that source in this chart.
It is 300 acre feet for October, 300 acre feet for November and 100 acre feet for December.
And the 100 is, reflects rainy season.
If we were to move into rainy season, if not, it would look a lot more like October and November, correct?
Okay, fine, thank you. Okay, I was, I was having trouble with this chart because I was not reading it correctly. Thank you.
Questions?
I do, Chair Edwards, if you don't mind.
Add that director Hoffman.
Yeah, John, going back to that, the last table and, and showing on the seaside basin, the 300, the 300, then dropping to 100 on the Pure Water Monterey. I mean, Pure Water Monterey is going to be operating consistently. That's the idea, right? 12 months of the year. So what is this reflecting in the, in the context that it's basically showing a reduction in the amount of Pure Water Monterey water being used? Am I missing something or?
No, that, that's true there. This is also related. So this is the amount of Pure Water Monterey that's being extracted, not the amount that's being injected. So there is a balance, a net balance in the ground and it is proposed in December, if it starts raining in past ground, in past quarterly water budgets, because of the way that the system is plumbed together, when the Forest Lake tanks and the Crest tank or the Sugunda tank is coming through Crest and pushing water towards the ASR wells, water is all moving south to north and, and going towards ASR wells. You can also feed the demand in the seaside groundwater basin and the seaside system from those other source, from those sources in the valley. But in order to increase ASR yields, usually seaside basin wells are run to meet some of the demand in seaside. In previous water years, that amount of water was tallied to the native groundwater. But in order to remove all of the Pure Water Monterey, it's totaled to removing 100 acre feet of Pure Water Monterey on the average during injection season. And that's to want, do two things, remove Pure Water Monterey and show it being consumed in every quarter and every month, and also to meet the demand in seaside so that the demand in seaside is not consuming water that could be harvested and injected in ASR.
And if I may, Director Edwards, and so John, on the upper part of the table, lower subunits 9510, showing December 552, that is reflective of an assumption on a certain precipitation or flow in the Carmel River?
Yes, it's based on an average water year to where you do get some, you get about 145 acre feet of water that you can inject for ASR. And so if we're moving over to the regime where the system runs and produces water out of the Carmel Valley and moves the water to the peninsula and then over to seaside and then also to the injection wells. And we are reducing the amount of water that is produced in the seaside groundwater basin. And that's also consistent with State Board Order 2002, that you're supposed to maximize more so the production in the Carmel River when you're out of the, out of the low flow period and, and save the water in the seaside groundwater in the low flow period. It's consistent with the other, other years of quarterly water budgets based on taking the NOAA Climate Prediction Center prediction that this is going to be slightly below normal water year. So by, by taking a normal water year, we're, we're, the, the Quarterly Water Budget Group thought that that was a conservative approach.
And if I may, Director Edwards, so John shows that for diversions for injection ASR, nothing is predicted. Obviously, this is all just predictive modeling and I understand that. Nothing till December, being at 145. And the ability to divert is limited on the number of months. So how, if we're assuming nothing in October, November, how do we get to the overall 1,300 acre feet annually when basically we're at a deficit, if you want to call it that, at 1,200 acre feet starting the new year? And we only have a few months to, to make it up.
Well, that is, I believe if, if I'm understanding your question, Director Hoffman, you're saying if the parallel pipeline is not installed to remove a blockage of, and, and the ASR season is clipped, is that what you're asking?
No, I'm just saying that it looks like, you know, we only have a certain number of months in which we can divert based on the flow in the Carmel River. And it looks to me, if I'm understanding this chart and this projection budget correctly, is that there's no anticipation of divert any flow in October, November and only starting in December, there's anticipation of 145 acre feet, which then lends to the question, well, if we're going to get to this 1,300 acre feet that everybody likes to hang their hat on, by the end of the ability to shave off the peaks, that seems like a tall mountain to climb.
Yeah, I, the comment I would make to that is that the permits are not only flow regulated, they're, they're years or, sorry, months of the year regulated. So we have it, you can only begin December 1 and you, and you can only go through May 31st. So that it would be in the shoulder months that you can't see on this table that those values would, they're kind of a bell curve and, and in the average water year. And so you're, you're just seeing the very beginning of it. And this is would be my answer. So, but, but we do kind of sit down and pencil out the first six months to understand because as you said, this is predictive modeling and we don't know if it's going to rain or not. And so we, we play the, the kind of the what if game, what would we do if it did rain? What would we do if it didn't?
Okay, so that's what I, thank you, that clarifies it for me that you're only looking out through the end of the year and that as the year progresses, you'll reevaluate as new modeling on the climate and NOAA stuff comes in, then you'll adjust.
Yes, that's the, that's one of the functions of the quarterly water budget. Yes, that's, that's the, that's one of the functions of the quarterly water budget group. And I would say the other core function of it is to, um, figure out the, the most, um, uh, environmentally responsible way that complies with all of these orders, uh, in order to, um, produce water at the Rule 160 targets from the system.
That's all I had. Director Edwards, thanks very much.
Thank you, Director Hoffman. Okay, uh, one question for me. Do we, are we going to have new water going through the system?
Um, I, there, there will be recovery of pure water Monterey and that will be, um, in the, it will be more of the, um, chemistry of the Carmel River water that is in the ground that is banked, um, from the last ASR season. And it is envisioned that it would take about a year for the actual molecules of pure water Monterey to enter into the Calam delivery system.
Okay, and, and you answered my question because I want the public aware of when that's going to happen because any changes in their water, they're going to accuse somebody that they're getting something. So I want to make sure that Calam and us are aware when that water hits these faucets, my faucet, I want to know, my tub, I want to know. So, um, we're going to move on. Okay, let's open it up to the public.
All right, if you'd like to make a comment, please press star nine on your phone or use the raised hand icon. Chair Edwards, I see no raised hands.
Thank you, Arlene. Public comment is closed on this item.
I approve.
A second.
I believe the vice chair made approval and I think, uh, Director Evans made the second. Roll call vote please.
Director Riley?
Hi.
Director Hoffman?
Yes.
Director Potter?
Hi.
Director Adams?
Hi.
Director Byrne?
Yes.
Director Evans?
Hi.
And Director Edwards?
Yes.
Motion pass to seven zero.
Motion pass seven zero. All right, General Manager, win action items.
Yes, we've got two action items. First one is, uh, item 17, and this is related to pure wat- pure water Monterey, uh, remediation of the injection issues as well as a funding proposal. Um, I do have one chart to show before we get into the meat of it. Um, and I did share an email with you. The chart you're seeing here is, this was actually our ad last Thursday in the Weekly and Friday in the Pinecone. Um, basically letting people know that, uh, deliveries for, uh, customer service began September 1. We actually met the 1,000 acre foot operating reserve on or about August 21st. So, uh, beginning September 21st, there was more than 1,000 acre feet stored in the basin. Now, since, really since the beginning of the injections, we've been watching very carefully what the injection capacity is. And then with the failure of the, uh, the foundational issues, uh, under Vados owned, uh, well, number two, um, the two shallow wells have been taken offline. Um, and design for remediating those, uh, has been underway. However, uh, staff from the district, staff from Monterey One Water and a variety of our consultants have been meeting weekly to both, uh, analyze progress on the injection front as well as to, uh, develop final, uh, conditioning, uh, of the wells of the two deep wells, uh, in order to recover some injection capacity. And I think it's, at this point, the common belief of that regular working group. And then we also have a, a group of Monterey One Water District Staff and Calam staff. And they all agree that additional deep well capacity is an affordable and, uh, sensible solution that would provide uh, operational flexibility, allow the district to meet its performance guarantees under the water purchase agreement and would create redundancy. And so the proposal is that Monterey One Water would, uh, pick up the funding of deep injection well number three, which in the attachment you can see is estimated at, uh, 4.3 million. And that the district would, uh, pick up the funding of injection well number four, which would be, um, approximately 3.7 million. Uh, Administrative Committee had some, uh, thorough questions about some of the funding elements. Uh, nevertheless, uh, recommended approval. And of course, the Waterspike Planning Committee met and recommended, uh, the deep injection well strategy as, uh, something that they were favorably disposed to do. So what we're asking today is to, uh, and Arlene, go ahead and unmute, uh, Paul Schuto and David Lindau or Dave Lindau. Um, and if you want, you can throw Mike McCullough in there too. Representatives of Monterey One Water who can answer some of these questions. I did send an email around this week uh, as we continue to probe what the real story was last week, I guess it was. You know, people really focus in on their recollections. And the decision to go from four well pairs to two well pairs appears to have happened in 2016 before the designer, uh, won the bid. Um, there's no record, formal record of when that decision was made, but it was obviously in the bid package that went out to designers. Um, nevertheless, our water purchase agreement envisioned, uh, four well pairs. We've all come to agree that the shallow wells are less important to the success of the project than the deep wells. And so additional shallow wells are not being proposed here at all. Um, with this recommendation is, uh, to include a 10% contingency. So a little over 4 million total. And it can either be fully funded, uh, at mid-year budget or carried over to fiscal years because our current adopted budget only has $3 million in it for deep wells. And with that, I'll take any questions or Monterey One Water staff can take questions.
Okay, board questions to the GM for Monterey One Water.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Director Hoffman.
Um, Dave or Paul or someone? The, um, the availability of, um, the SFR funds of the 6.1 million, um, how does that split between well number three, well number four or operational costs? How does that, how, how does that number, which that number exceeds the cost of well three? It costs, it costs the well four. How does that number relate to the numbers we're dealing with?
Right, we'll let Paul, uh, answer it, but it includes more than just the wells. There were other, other requests made originally. So it was one well and other stuff. Paul, I don't know if you're available, if you've been on.
Can, can you hear me? Okay, so I'm on audios via phone, but I do have my computer on as well. Uh, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to this. Um, to Director Riley, your question, the 6.1 million dollars was absolutely more than just deep injection well number three. It was also, um, design costs, construction management, engineering services during construction, the final commissioning of the first two deep injection wells, which we were doing, the swabbing and, and cleaning as well as the stabilization of the Vados zone well. So there was a number of items that rolled up to that 6.1 million. I believe, um, I don't have the broken down budget in front of me, but if I'm not mistaken, about four point, I want to say 4.7 million was allocated towards deep injection well number three. And I don't know if Dave Lindau has a more granular look at it, if that's what you're looking for, Director Riley.
Uh, no, I, I, I was just curious about the difference in the number, the numbers that were presented in the, in the staff report. But also I want to commit you, commend you, Paul, for just jumping on the idea of, uh, of, uh, uh, applying for and getting approval of additional, uh, SFR funding. I, I thought that was a, that was a great initiative on your part and I, and, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other board questions?
Chair, this is Director Evans. I'll, I would like to go after Director Hoffman.
Thank you, because I heard him first. Go ahead, Director Hoffman.
Yeah, um, I'm just kind of confused because just last week and in several occasions, the general managers actually said that in his notes that the, uh, change for, from two wells to three wells was done, um, from his notes at the 30% design stage. So that's confusing to me because now the actual documents show that, well, in fact, um, four wells were posed for 6,000 acre feet um, of capacity for injection. And, and so, and so that's just mind boggling to me that somehow facts change as the situation changes. But regardless of that, um, that being said, um, my question, uh, is really, this question is related to Mr., uh, Schudo, and there's a statement in the staff report saying that the state revolving fund, SRF funds for well number three can be applied to pay on well number four, which is a project that the state board declined to fund because they do not fund redundant unnecessary facilities. So, um, Mr. Schudo, could you address the um, statements in the staff report that claim that you can pay construction management, design services on well number four through funding provided for well number three?
Thank you for the question, Director Hoffman. Um, so I'm actually two things. I don't have my reading glasses with me, so I'm trying to read your staff report in that section. I assume it's on page 150, about midpoint where it's referencing that. Is that what you're looking at?
Now you're going to make me, uh,
Yeah.
my reading glasses.
Yeah, and Paul, just for yeah, and just for clarification, it clearly says DIW 4 is not budgeted within the SRF loan agreement or loan amendment.
Right.
But it does, it does have a statement that says that M1W has suggested that to minimize budget impacts to the district, you would look to cover some of the construction management, engineering services and conditioning with your SRF loan.
Very, thank you, Dave. Um, so Director Hoffman, with that clarification, um, so certainly our amendment to the SRF loan would not cover, like you mentioned, the design services nor the construction of DIW 4. However, being that both three and four would be part of the same construction project, we were anticipating an economy of scale, if you will, on the construction management costs as well as the engineering services during construction. And then finally, the commissioning. In addition to that economy of the scale, what I'm hopeful, depending on how the bids turn out, is that we could apply some of the SRF costs to those after bid soft costs to get the thing running. Um, as, as you all know, uh, SRF is pretty stringent and they keep tabs, tabs of everything in terms of auditing our financials as well as the project. However, in commissioning things for the overall project, which they have funded for the entire project, we feel that it would be, uh, an acceptable expenditure to them. So I, I don't know if that addresses your question, Director Hoffman.
Uh, it does, Paul, thank you, partially. Um, but my other, um, statement that I made about, um, did you approach the state water board about financing well number four as well? And what was their response as to why apparently they did not?
Um, so we did not ask the state about well number four, uh, for, uh, two reasons. One reason was we, the team, did not have any data to show that well number three and four would be good sites. Um, the hydrogeologists on the entire team felt there was an opportunity for well three. Well, four was somewhat questionable until we received the hard data. So that was not included in the budget amendment request. The second reason is in including well number four, obviously that budget request goes from that 6.1 million dollars to 10 or 11 million dollars. As we start approaching 10% of the overall loan amount, we did not want to put ourselves in a position where the state would say no, because it was just a larger amount and they were comfortable loaning. In addition, uh, and the comfortable loaning portion of it, as you may know, the, um, the Clean Water Fund up at the state was recently reduced their loaned amount from $1 billion down to $500 million. So there was a bit of a belt tightening at the state and we wanted to ensure that we would frankly get some funds to at least get deep injection well three in the ground. So that was a conscious decision not to include deep injection well four from the whole team, but more specifically from me.
And if I may, Director Edwards, if you don't mind. Um, so, so, um, well number three, um, plus, if, if you look at the, um, reports, well number three, well actually number wells, number one and two, plus the Vados wells were identified as being adequate, um, for the 3,700 acre feet of the phase one. Um, uh, clearly there appears that the production of the, those wells is not achieve that. Um, so with respect to wells, well number four, what do you foresee as the function? And I would also ask this of Calam. Um, the function of well number four, given the fact that by all accounts, well number four would provide the capability of 6,000 acre feet of injection for a 3,500 acre foot project?
So, uh, Director Hoffman, if I can, um, first address the 6,000 acre foot thing and then secondly, go on to, um, the discrepancy of what we decided on versus where we're at today. I believe if I'm not mistaken, the 6,000 acre feet would have been in the EIR, we had four deep wells, each at about 1,000 acre feet per year. I'm sorry. It was more than 1,000 GPM each. And then Vados zone wells at 500 GPM each. So in total, that was 6,000, um, gallons per minute if everything was built. Back in 16, when we made the decision based on the modeling and the test data we had, we did feel that the two deep wells would produce, well, inject 1,000 gallons per minute in the Vados zones 500, and that would have been enough for the 3,500 acre feet. Actually, the 3,700 acre feet. However, based on the test data, reality showed us something different. The hydrogeology and geology out there, um, led us to where we are now. So we certainly felt that deep injection well three was necessary in order to meet the contractual obligations of the water purchase agreement. In the discussions with the Monterey One Water Board on that third well, a number of our directors suggested it's never going to be less expensive to drill a fourth well. You may need redundancy. What happens when one of your existing wells is down for maintenance, et cetera? Um, and then actually during a public comment period, uh, Ian Crooks with Calam mentioned the same thing. He used the term to have a plus one or additional infrastructure as a redundant well. So in thinking that through and bringing it to our board and others, it seemed like a prudent way to go, particularly being that, um, we had an opportunity with the data showing that deep injection well foresight was viable. Now, deep injection well four, please, let's not have any misunderstanding. It will not be a 4,000 GPM injection well. We are hopeful that it will be close to our existing deep injection well number two, which is in the 700 GPM, 800 GPM range as we speak. So it will be a great producer, but by no means are we going to be able to get to 6,000 acre feet per year. And, and frankly, if you would like And and frankly, if you would like more of the data behind those statements, we can prepare something based on everything we have and forward it to uh your GM to get to the board.
Thank you, Chair. I don't have any other questions. Appreciate it, Paul. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Appreciate the question.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Uh Mr. Shudo, I personally would like to take you up on your offer to provide the data to our GM for distribution to the board. I'd be interested to see that. Um my question uh to you, well, maybe to Dave Stolt. Earlier, you stated that no one knows when the decision was made to go from four well pairs to two. Um is that a is that is that correct? Is that what I heard?
Yeah, well, we're getting closer to figuring out when that decision was made. You know, we've kind of bookended it now. John went back to his field notes. Um Maureen thought she was here and now we've determined it was before she was hired. So it it's two thousand and seventeen. Um it was, I suspect it was in conjunction with developing the bid package for the engineering and design. But we don't have a definitive uh tech memo or something that said, here's here's what's happened. And so the one entity and Paul, I don't know if you guys have followed up on or not, that we haven't spoken with in the last week is Todd Groundwater. It could have been that they did a rudimentary uh analysis and said, yeah, you should be able to do it with the two well pairs. But but I don't have a document yet that I can that I can share with you.
Okay, I am I I'm really I'm really concerned by this um because this is something that was such a monumental decision that fundamentally changed this project and that nobody remembers when it happened or who made that decision. And now yet here we are, trying to scramble to find funds and figure out a way where the cost of water is already above what we expected it to be and that cost is going to have to be borne by somebody and um likely this board and this organization. And you know, it I don't want to know in order to point the finger. I want to know in order to understand what the decision process was that got us to that point and now why we're standing here with our backs against the wall, being forced to allocate funds for something that should have already been incorporated into this project from the get-go. I'd like to know the reasoning behind the original decision um because I don't like to be in this position. That said, going forward, I understand this would be a this fourth well would be included as a optional item into the bid package that would go out later this week. When are the bids expected in and when will will we be able to make a final decision on go or no go?
Paul?
Dave, if you want me to answer that. So
Yeah.
um and I can give you a little background just from memory, Molly, uh on some of the decision points. But to your direct question, um the the bid for deep injection well number three was advertised on September eighth. We are pushing hard with the designers to complete the design of deep injection well number four by the end of this week. It will be incorporated by addendum to the bid that went out on the eighth. Bid opening is October sixteenth. And then we anticipate bringing it to our board for award on October twenty-sixth. Does that sort of give you the schedule that you're looking for?
Yes. Does our board get to say whether we will contribute on on the deep well four or does your board make that decision for us?
So the the way I've and we did discuss this specifically last week, um our belief is if the bids come in with this component uh within a, you know, our estimate or our approval uh tonight, that we don't have to or we shouldn't want to go back and reconsider it. Um you know, or if it's within, you know, shouting distance. If the bids came in significantly higher, you know, more than ten percent, you know, I've already got ten percent contingency in there. Then I think we would have to take a deep breath and decide whether we wanted to stick it out. And I think we could do that on the sixteenth. You know, it'd be an open open item, but we have a board meeting that evening, I believe.
Okay. So to the chair.
Go ahead, Director.
There is certainly some urgency in making this decision. Am I correct?
Yeah. It it it's because, you know, if if we tonight say we're just not interested, then the addendum to the bid packet won't go out. If we say, hey, we're in it four point one million and the bids come in at four point one million or less, then, you know, we've taken care of it. But yeah, the urgency is there's going to be a bid opening October sixteenth and it's either in it or not in it and shortly thereafter, it's either go or no go.
So just out of curiosity, how much money has been spent on this project to date and what percentage is four million more? I mean, we've put a lot of money into this project and it needs to function a hundred percent.
Yeah, yeah. So you know, round numbers, one hundred and twenty-six million for the project. It's about to get expanded with the uh amendment to the state revolving fund loans. So call it one hundred and thirty-two. Yep. And so our it'd be our four on top of that. And
About three percent.
Yeah, but the one hundred and twenty-six million doesn't include the other ten to twelve. Suresh, I can't remember what we've not reimbursed that we've already spent as well. So we've got another ten or twelve.
Yeah, district had about twelve million dollars and Monterey One Water had about six million dollars.
Yeah.
Uh Director Edwards, one one more question for uh Mr. Shudo, may I?
Director Hoffman?
Um Paul, the way the bid was structured, was it in an additional um alternate bid item? In other words, one that can be accepted or not accepted? What was the what? How was the bidding documents structured or the addition of potential addition of well number four in the bidding documents?
Uh thank you for that question, Director Hoffman. Um so the plan, assuming that your board approved the authorization of the three point seven million plus contingency, was to have it as a part of the bid entirely, not as an additive alternate or something like that. The reason for it is to try to get frankly, the best price we possibly can and have an evil even weighting of the bids. As as you well know, when when you have additive alternates, it's a wonderful tool to use in public contracts. But oftentimes contractors can unweight their bids, sort of betting on one of the alternates or not. So that was our intent. Now, if your board does not approve this authorization, we would certainly start talking tomorrow and maybe having it as an additive alternate um in hopes that you would approve it in at a future date. But it would certainly put us at a bit of a disadvantage in trying to get the best possible price that we can.
Thank you. Um thank you, Director Edwards, for the opportunity.
You're welcome.
Chair Edwards, may I ask one question in response to Mr. Shudo's response to my first question?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um Mr. Shudo, you mentioned that uh the firm is currently designing well number four and you're in a you're you're trying to push it along so that it'll be ready to go out in the bid package. If this board decides not to approve that this well number four at this time, who is on the hook for those design fees?
Uh that would be Monterey One Water under my direction and uh I guess I'd have to try to find the funds for that. So I appreciate that, Director Evans, because that is a bit of a gamble we took because we think it's the we feel this is the best solution for the community. And if we waited on the design, we would have lost the opportunity to have these bid together and have a larger project going out. But by no means were we assuming you would pay for anything on that.
Okay, thanks.
I have a follow-up question, Chair.
Go ahead.
Um Paul or Dave, um if the fourth well uh produces more and and in total, all of the production, I know Vados wells are not not that productive, but in total, if production exceeds thirty-five hundred acre feet um and then Ag does not buy the water that's extra, uh is that water available for the peninsula or is that water available for uh storage?
Uh yes, the water would be available for storage that would be on our our dime as the district. I think what's being forgotten in all this conversation is in the first three years, we're supposed to do an additional two hundred and fifty acre feet into the reserves. So when we've mentioned thirty-five hundred and then thirty-seven hundred, that's imagining two hundred for a drought reserve that if the growers decide not to participate, we we're not obligated to do. But we're also obligated on another seven hundred and fifty acre feet into the operating reserve over three years, which means if the growers remain in, which they currently are right now, the first three-year obligation is thirty-nine fifty acre feet. So there won't be a whole lot of excess capacity or redundancy in that situation. But the bigger answer to your question is um if the drought reserve doesn't need to get funded, but the water is there and producible, yeah, you can produce as much water and inject as much water as the willing payer is willing to pay. But Monterey One Water will be looking to be paid and we'd be looking to resell it and there's no reseller. So it that would stop with us and we would be funding up additional reserves.
I have one more question, Director.
And then we're going to have to ask the other board members. Do they have any questions? Go ahead.
Okay, um so I thought the four wells really were required to make the um project operate at its projected optimum.
Yeah, so I think we've all determined that we can get to where we needed to be with three wells. And it was serious um low expectations for site number four where the fourth well will go. And it turns out, and I'll get these numbers wrong, but I think it's from two hundred and ninety-foot mark to the five hundred and ninety-foot mark is some really good geology. And so there's like two hundred feet of really good screenable uh aquifer there, which means it's a pretty decent well. It's not going to be as good as deep injection well number one, but it'll it'll be a good well. So and I didn't see John waving his hand, so I must have gotten pretty close to the uh results of the test boring. So it just makes it better and it's um and it and it does allow us to do things like the additional two hundred and fifty acre feet per year to get the operating reserve up or um in conditions where water is available, the district can make a decision whether it wants to bank additional water for drought protection. You know, it but remember, the the history of wells, especially for you directors who've been on long enough, is they tend to decline in productivity, which is why you get out there and rehab them and do things. Um you know, look at Ryan Ranch. We talked about that earlier tonight. So um whoever made the statement earlier that it's not going to get any cheaper to put a fourth well in and it will really make the project that much more uh you know, redundant is, I hate using that word all the time, but you know, you'll be able to pull a wellhead out or wellhead off and to pump out and recondition one well without stressing over your capacity, hopefully. So.
Mr. Chair.
Uh go ahead, Director Potter.
Thank you. Um so I've realized that as the staff report says, that this action does not constitute a project as defined by CEQA because we're dealing with the financing of this. But I'm wondering, is the project now consistent with the original EIR that was done?
Yes.
Or has there been modifications to it such that it might need a supplemental?
No, so yeah, that's a great question. All of the sites were in earlier EIR and all of the wells were in the earlier EIR. So we're we're covered from that standpoint.
Okay, thanks.
Director Adams, do you have any questions?
No, I mean, I I just listening to everything, I just think that we should go ahead and move forward with the fourth well. It you know, it's when you look at the overall cost of the project, it's it's not very much. I feel like this is something that um we should do. And in general, there's nothing wrong with redundancy. It's going to serve us better in the if we take the if we're looking at the long term. I think we should just go ahead and do this. And I appreciate all of the back and forth. It was very interesting to hear the history as well as, you know, kind of who was on first. But when it just cuts to the chase, I think we need to do this. That's just my opinion.
Okay, thank you, Director Adams. General manager for Monterey One Water and GM from the district. Hey, I'm paying for this water. Is it this 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 water that we're sort of like over on? We bid it one way and it's a little bit over on. I keep bringing this up and I'd like an answer tonight. That reclamation project, four million dollars, what is it going to be used on? And I want a commitment tonight from somebody or a good answer.
Yeah, that's that's good because Mike McCullough was reminding me to talk about grant money um via text. I don't I don't know if that's like he wants to mention it, but um you know, the although we worked jointly with Monterey One Water to secure that U.S. Bureau of Reclamation grant, um the grantee is Monterey One Water. Um Paul, do you want to address the issue of where that grant money is expected to go?
Certainly. So uh Chair Edwards, certainly I probably I cannot make a commitment, but I hopefully can give you a good answer to your question. And as you well know, the uh Title sixteen win grant that we were successful on is about four point one million dollars. Uh part of our SRF loan for the overall project is we need to put debt service away for what worth one years of debt service, which is four point two million dollars. Um at this point, Monterey One Water is funding that debt service, so basically an inter uh inter-enterprise fund borrowing, if you will. If and when we get that win fund, I would recommend to our board and certainly um would talk to Dave Stolt about this, but using the grant to fund the one year of debt service that is required by the SRF loan, so therefore not having inter-fund loans between our wastewater fund and the pure wand. Does that answer your question?
Uh Dave, would that take care of our problem or would the district
Yeah, yeah.
deal with that with that over?
Yeah, there's there's so many places it could go, um all of all of which are related to the project. So Paul's answer is a decent answer. Um you know, we've talked about buying down the cost of water by reducing something. I think uh at this point, you may recall at Waters play planning, we had a a mid-voltage electrical connection to the landfill and the bids came in way too high. Uh they were rejected. And um I think at this point, we wouldn't apply this money to that that instead that project can get funded by the Waste Management District. And then the price passed through in the the energy rate. So you know, we're still looking at wrapping up all of the remaining little needs for cash. But it, you know, it'll definitely go to the project.
Okay, thank you.
So Mr. Mr. Chair, if I could, it's Potter again.
Go ahead.
I just want to double back on this EIR thing and make sure that these additional facilities that are in this project are consistent with the expansion EIR. Is that what you're saying, Dave? That they've been analyzed in their entirety?
Yeah, no, in the actually in the original EIR for this base phase one. Um and and that's a little bit how um the agreements got drafted the way they did. The water purchase agreement had four well pairs, four locations. Um even the uh water storage and recovery agreement with the water master had all four sites identified. So it was in that original base EIR that um was certified back in April of two thousand and sixteen, I think it was, somewhere in there.
Base EIR and the expansion EIR?
Uh no, the expansion EIR covered a completely Uh, no, the expansion EIR covered a completely different set of locations. And of course, as you know, that's just, it's not certified. It's kind of in limbo. So this, these are not wells that were looked at for the expansion.
They were in the original.
Yeah.
And the magnitude of the expansion, it was in its full capacity.
Yeah, the magnitude, if, if the expansion went forward, these wells wouldn't, would not provide sufficient capacity for the base project and the expansion.
All right, got you. Thanks.
Yep.
Hey, Ireland, let's open it up to the public, please.
I have one more thing, Director Edwards, if you wouldn't mind, Mr. Shudo.
Oh, we're going to open it up to the public and then we'll get back to you, Director Hoffman. Go ahead, Ireland, open it up to the public.
All right, I'm checking to see if there are any raised hands. Any persons who want to speak on this item? Mr. Haller, can I still see your hand raised? All right. I see no other raised hands, Chair Edwards. Oh, yes, we do have a comment. Just a moment, I will unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Susan Shavon, please, with your comment.
Hi, I just wanted to say I've attended some of the meetings with the M1 board on this issue. And I totally support the additional wells. If you're going to do this, you should do it right. And it is part of the original project. I realize it's an expense. But I think setting this system up correctly is an important thing to do.
Any other raised hands?
I see no other raised hands.
Okay, public comment on this item is closed. Director Hoffman, go ahead and ask your question.
Thank you, Chair. Paul, you mentioned about using SRF funds in a manner that I'm not aware is allowable. Could you elaborate when you're talking about covering debt with SRF loans in that, in the, in the manner which described?
I'm sorry, Director Hoffman, recovering debt with the SRF loan?
I'm just, I'm just, I'm just repeating what you said about using SRF funds to cover a debt in, in that you paid on a different issue.
Yeah, it's, no, it's called a debt service.
I believe what I was referencing, sorry, Dave.
I was just saying, it's, it's, it's a debt service reserve fund and it's equal to one year's debt service. And because it's a leveled debt stream, you know, one year is just like the other year. So it, you know, it would cover any, any year. But the whole idea is you establish a rate covenant, which means you set rates and charges to produce, you know, one.
Yeah, that, yeah, that wasn't my question. My question is, Mr. Shudo indicated that SRF funds could be used to cover a debt. And I'm wanting Mr. Shudo to explain what he's talking about.
It's a reserve fund.
So, so if I said that, I was mistaken, Director Hoffman. It was the, as Dave Stoltz mentioned, we have to have a debt reserve front, fund as required by the SRF loan. But the dollars to be used, I am hopeful we can use the funds from the Bureau of Reclamation Title 16 win grant to put in that account. So by no means am I trying to put SRF funds into a reserve account. It's, it's either our own reserves, M1W's reserves, or if we can use the grant funds from the Bureau of Rec, it would be for that. So sorry to confuse that issue.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks for the clarification. That's all I had, Chair.
I'd like to move approval.
And you got a second from the chair. Vice Chair made the motion and I'm seconding it. Let's have discussion and comments. Who want to go first? Anybody? If not, I'm going to close that up. What's up? What's up? I'm going to say this. We committed to this project. We did it when we sent that letter in to the Coastal Commission. I want it to work. I want it to work because it needs to work. This district is on the hook. We are on the hook. Through that water purchase agreement, to make sure that this project works. Yes, it's going to cost money and it costing a lot of money, but it's cheaper than $1 billion. I'm telling you that now. So I know it's hard to suck up. But in the split, I think I had it 4654. We got to work with Monterey One Water. We got to try to work with them. And they say that these four deep wells are going to work. I believe they're going to work. And if it's 6,000 acre feet capacity, I hope we can get that much. Because we still got water flowing out to the river. I mean, out to the ocean. So I'll close on that and call for the question.
Excuse me, Director Edwards, you need to allow opportunity for other board members to speak.
Director Hoffman, I just asked, was it anybody else? And then I made my comment, now you want to comment. I won't let you comment on this one. But I said, is there anybody who want to make a comment?
And then you just, and then you went off on your dissertation.
I'm, I'm going off. Now it's your turn. Go ahead.
Thank you. I think from an engineering perspective, it's premature to go for little well number four. It's clear that from an engineering perspective, it's not necessary. And I think the water board made it clear and that they wouldn't fund it. It's great to have some level of redundancy. But the EAR points out that even without well four, there's flexibility without it. And so I'm sorry, but this is not our money. This is the ratepayers' money and the taxpayers' money. So I have a responsibility to spend their money responsibly. And so with that in mind, I'm not going to sit here and just spend other people's money without regard for the hard work and the fact that they are struggling and we're just spending their money without regard. So
Chair, you called the question that ends debate. You called the question, your title due to that as the second of the motion.
Thank you, sir.
Discussion has occurred.
Thank you. And I'm not going to comment on that one because I'm ready to move on. Okay, call, roll call, please.
Director Adams?
Evans or Adams?
Adams.
Aye.
Director Potter?
Aye.
Director Hoffman?
No.
Director Evans?
Aye.
Director Riley?
Aye.
Director Byrne? Director Edwards?
Yes.
Motion passes six, one.
Thank you. Okay, I'm getting a little hot. Last item, we can carry to the next meeting. So any other? Anything else we have to do? Mr. Riley, how do I end this one? We carry that next item to the next meeting.
I'll second that emotion.
That's a motion to continue.
Okay, a motion to continue that item.
And you got a second from me.
And second from Director Potter, roll call vote, please.
Chair on the discussion, if I may?
Yes, you may.
What are the ramifications of postponing that one month? Do we have a deadline, any time constraints that we need to meet?
General Manager, can you answer that?
Yes, we do not have any time constraints. The, the deal with the public was we would collect both charges for three years. That just ended, but it wasn't a hard stop. When the, we adopted this year, this fiscal year budget, we did include collection of both fees going forward. So, and we, and as long as we keep doing things like paying for pieces of the water supply project or the reserves, we're going to need the water supply charge. So it, it is, the time is right to come up with a plan that will allow for sunsetting. But there's no time constraint to begin sunsetting. And we're clearly not in a position that we can afford to do anything yet.
Okay, on to discussion. Anything? My apologies to the board, but let's have that roll call vote, please.
Director Evans? Director Riley?
Aye.
Director Hoffman?
Yes.
Director Adams?
Aye.
Director Byrne?
Yes.
Director Potter?
Aye.
And Director Edwards?
Yes.
Motion passes seven, zero.
Motion passes seven, zero. Thank you for your time. Long meeting day. Mean the journey.